All right, I'm going to go ahead and call our board meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Everyone, welcome to our Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Education Annual Annual Organizational Meeting. I'm going to go ahead and start with a roll call of my fellow board members. Stacy Begin, I'm here. Raquel Alvarez, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Mike Blessing.
Present.
Thank you. Eric Joyce.
Present.
Thank you. And Eleanor Evans.
Present.
Thank you. We're all present and accounted for. I'm going to go ahead and start out with the pledge. So if you could put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, moving on to item two B, Public Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. A motion was made unanimously, second and carried to appoint Paula Sedar as Director of Fiscal Services. So congratulations Paula for joining the Oceanside team. All right, my favorite part of the meeting, item two C, are our student representatives from our high schools. So I'm going to start with Evan Hemmerly from Surfside. How are you tonight, Evan?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. You want to share some of the stuff going on at Surfside?
Sure. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Vitale and guests. My name is Evan Hemmerly and I'm the student representative for Surfside Educational Academy this evening. Congratulations to our November Students of the Month from Surfside, Jesus Chiri Ribetta from Surfside High School and Isabella Marero from Surfside Academy Independent Study. Both students received a certificate of recognition and a Surfside T-shirt. Isabella and Jesus have done an outstanding job with their classes here at Surfside and they have worth lots of praise from their teachers and for a job well done. Keep up the good work, Isabella and Jesus. Slide two, please. A second congratulations goes out to Jesus Rivera receiving the city of Ocean Side, Chamber of Commerce Rising Star Recognition. Jesus was selected as a senior student representative from Surfside High School. Jesus has made a one hundred and eighty turnaround since coming to Surfside. He has established a, he has done a great job working toward and completing class assignments and establishing a positive student reputation for himself. After graduation, Jesus plans to enlist in the U.S. Marine Corps and receive training in firefighting. Last month, we shared our Surfside was preparing for annual holiday pop-up shop and it's finally here. The donations have been abundant and the variety of items to choose from is outstanding. Students will be able to provide special gifts for their family members at no cost to them. The pop-up shop will be open to students beginning Friday, December tenth through Friday, December seventeenth, before and after school. Again, a very special thank you to our security guards, Felicia Andrade and Donald Vivian for preparing and organizing this for our students, along with staff members. Also, thank you to who generously donated some great items. On Thursday, November sixteenth, Surfside enjoyed some friendly competition with our principal, Eric Franston, Vice Principal Judy Anne Watson and students from both Independent Study and Surfside High School. The object of the competition was to eat your way to the bottom of the pile of whipped cream and find a piece of bubble gum to place in your mouth and chew it and blow a bubble. First one to accomplish this was the winner. It provided lots of fun and a good time was had by all the participants. At school dismissal, students were treated to a piece of pumpkin pie or apple pie. Last week, Surfside Sharks launched our basketball team. Practices have been taking place on a daily basis with focus of sharpening and developing their skills. The team has three talented individuals, Paul, Paul, Pow-Pow, Joe Talu and Donald Vivian as coaches. All three bring great experience to the game, providing not only a good skill set but demonstrating true sportsmanship and team community. The Sharks play their first game Friday, December tenth against Valley High School in Escondido. Go Sharks! Since nineteen seventy-nine, our Child Care Center has been serving our teen parent population. Originally, the center was established at Continuation High School's original location under the name of Ocean Shores High School. Now, here at Surfside, it continues to support our teen parent with childcare while continuing to earn their high school diploma. Over the years, our teen moms and dads have shown to be a population of goal-oriented, self-directed students. Under the direction and supervision of our childcare teacher, Norrine Yusakachi, this center has been provided a safe, fun, positive environment. Infants and children learn, develop these motor skills for development, class instruction and socialization. We appreciate our childcare center staff and the support they offer to our students. Here's a short video highlighting the center.
The Child Development Center at Surfside allows students to continue their education while their son or daughter is in safe hands on campus. Each day, staff at the Child Development Center teach, feed and interact with these children. Individual lessons also occur with the little ones. In this lesson, childcare staff are teaching baby Soraya about life science. Soraya's mother, Nishay, recently graduated from Surfside High and spoke highly of the program.
Hello, my name is Nishay. This is my first year bringing my baby to the childcare center. I think it's pretty good. They teach her how to do a lot of stuff that, you know, I can't really do when I'm working and going to school and everything. It's a very good program.
Childcare staff are looking forward to moving into the original Child Development Center soon. From Surfside, I'm Vladimir Escuelo.
Thank you.
Thanks Evan for sharing all the great things over at Surfside. Appreciate it. Have a good holiday, okay?
Thank you, you too.
All right, our next student is Isaiah Aguilera from El Camino High School.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Begin and the rest of the board members, as well as to Superintendent Dr. Vitale and her executive staff and all who are present tonight. For giving me time to speak, my name is E C Asagulad and I am the ASB President and Student Representative from El Camino High. Next slide, please. Starting off with the week of November first to November fifth, choir held their cities-themed concert and did an amazing job to be held a lunchtime activity, cup stacking competition. And El Camino High is proud to share that our senior Wildcat, Gia Stafford, was honored by our Oceanside Chambers of Commerce as a Rising Star. The Rising Star program is to recognize high school seniors at our schools, high schools, who have overcome significant challenges in their life, but who have managed to keep or get back on track with their education. Great job, Gia. And our Athlete of the Week was cross-country runner Omar Reyes, who also won the sophomore race at Mixac Relays. Next slide. Continuing with the week of November eighth to November twelfth, the orchestra and advanced orchestra classes had an awesome concert Monday evening. El Camino graduate Kendall Wirtz has visited our admin team, who he is currently attending UCSD. And our Athlete of the Week was senior varsity quarterback, Kaya Reid. Next slide. Continuing with the week of November fifteenth to November nineteenth, El Camino High School celebrates the El Osmeros. Our Visual Arts Department has collaborated with Day of the Dead projects and our EC Drama Department put on Frozen Junior, the musical, and the newly renovated Shorax Theater. Next slide. Continuing with the week of November twenty-second to November twenty-sixth, Thanksgiving break took place, which allowed our students and staff to have fun as they got to spend time with friends and family during the summer. Also, our cheer captain at the annual Turkey Trot in downtown Ocean Side on Thanksgiving Day. And our cross-country runners, McCall, Dem and Omar Reyes ran in the CIF cross-country state finals in Fresno. Omar placed forty-fourth and McCall placed fortieth. Next slide, please. Continuing with the week of November twenty-ninth to December third, it's been held their annual convention event at lunch where candidates for next year's ASB officer positions could campaign to the student body. We also enjoyed some great music from the EC Rock Band Club during lunch. Also, our competitive cheer team won their CIF section championship. Dance Two students also held their annual dance show. And our Athlete of the Week was Varsity Girls Basketball Senior Callie Kahala. Next slide. And finally, in our world of athletics here at EC, regarding football, the first CIF playoff game was November fifth at home and against St. Augustine, where EC football advanced after winning twenty-three to fourteen. The second CIF playoff game was November twelfth away and against La Costa Canyon, where EC advanced to semifinals after winning thirty to twenty. The CIF Division One semifinal took place November twenty-ninth away and against Helix High School, which ended in a twenty-eight to seventeen loss. Regarding girls' basketball, November twenty-ninth, Varsity Girls Basketball won their home tournament game against Helix, eight-three to thirteen. Regarding cross-country, on November thirteenth, our boys' cross-country runners won the Coastal League title. Regarding girls' soccer, on November thirtieth, Varsity had their first game away and against Mount Carmel, ending in a tie, one-to-one. Regarding boys' soccer, on November thirtieth, Varsity had their first game away and against Mount Carmel, ending in a win, two-to-one. Finally, regarding our first of many Wildcat commitments, in football, Machavelli Malu Tumao signed to Eastern Washington University. In softball, Jade Ignacio signed to San Diego State University and Yasmin Gutierrez signed to West Cliff University. And in girls' golf, Jasmine Leavout signed to Long Beach State, as well as Janaye Leavout signed to Long Beach State. And we're all proud of Wildcats. Thank you and thank you for giving me the time to speak. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Isaiah, for sharing what they're doing at El Camino High School. Have a great holiday.
You as well. Thank you.
All right, our next student speaker is Gabby Kimbrel. Going to share what's going on at Oceanside High School.
Good evening, I'm Gabby Kimbrel and I'm OHS's ASB President. Thank you for having me, Board and Dr. Vitale. So what we have coming up is recognizations, our Spirit Week, our Toys for Tots, some sports action, our Cheer Stacking Annual Tour Drive and our holiday. So we want to congratulate Kendrick Mino and Emily Arnold for being nominated for San Diego's Most Remarkable Teens in San Diego County. We've had an awesome Spirit Week so far this week. So Monday was Crazy Socks or Croc Day. Today was Mr. Worldwide Day. Tomorrow's going to be Dress as Your Favorite Rapper. Thursday's Lazy Day and Friday's Your Favorite Holiday Gear. That's a picture of our ad. Our Toys for Tots. So our ASB has partnered with the grocery outlet right across the freeway from us for Toys for Tots and it started December sixth and we have a box right in front of our store for any donations. And that's our little flyer. Sports, fall sports have ended and water polo and football made it to the playoffs. Winter sports have begun their preseason and competitions. Cheer, our competitive cheer team traveled to Montgomery High School on Saturday, December fourth and we tumbled out with our runner-up in our Division One trophy, runner-up Division One. And what's coming up is we have our winter break in our winter formal, February nineteenth. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Gabby. Have a great winter break.
Thank you, you too.
All right, moving on to item two D, Approval of Agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero. I'll turn over the next item to Dr. Vitale.
Yes, this is our annual organizational meeting and Dr. Begin, you served as president for this year. Thank you so much. Eric Joyce, Vice President, thank you so much. Raquel Alvarez, Clerk, thank you so much. And now we will take nominations for the two thousand and twenty calendar year. And so I call for a motion for someone to serve as president.
I nominate Stacy Begin as President of the Board. I know this would break a precedent that I was part of for a bunch of years. And to have a president run a consecutive years, but I don't think there's anything magical about that precedent. It just, just worked out that way over the years. I think Stacy has done a remarkable job this past year under very trying circumstances, not only with COVID and running meetings in Zoom, but managing the work that we need to get done as a board member and liaison that with staff. And so I'm very happy to have her come back and do that another year.
Do I have a second?
Eleanor Evans, second.
Great. Any further comments?
I would just ditto what Mike just said. As far as Stacy running board meetings, she's done an amazing job and going through every process of figuring out these Zooms and, and just meeting and talking back with parents in every direction and staff. Just thank you so much, Stacy, for all that work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So we have a first and a second. All those in favor of Stacy serving for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two as president signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Stacy, congratulations, your president for two thousand and twenty-two, and I now turn the meeting over to you.
Lucky me. Thank you, board colleagues, for your support. I appreciate it. All right, so we're moving on to the election of Vice President of the Board. I would like to nominate trustee Raquel Alvarez to serve as Vice President.
I'll second that motion.
A first and a second. Trustee Alvarez has been working with me to set the agendas and working side by side and even with her limitations right now with her health, she's still managing to volunteer and be out there with, with the other schools that have. So it's great working with her and getting that perspective. All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor of Raquel Alvarez serving as Vice President, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Raquel.
Thank you.
All right, moving moving on to item three C, Election of Clerk of the Board.
I nominate Mike Blessing. I think Mike does an absolutely wonderful job in terms of doing presentations and explaining information. And he's a great guy.
Thank you, Eleanor.
I'll second that next with the knowledge that he brings into this board of just different perspectives. I thank him for that.
Yeah, the institutional knowledge, Mike. Great. All right, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Mike Blessing serving as Clerk of the Board, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you. I love signing those documents.
All right. All right, the next item, three D, Appoint Superintendent as Secretary of the Board of Education. I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Vitale as Secretary of the Board.
I'll second that.
For a second. All right, seeing no discussion or questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Dr. Vitale as Secretary of the Board, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Vitale.
I don't think, can you appoint anybody else to this position? By the head code, this is so academic.
Not sure anybody would want it anyways. Moving on to item three E.
Nice salary.
Approval of the two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting schedule. We all received a meeting schedule. And there were a few adjustments on there. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second.
I have a question. If, if we, if we are going to do workshops, are those added in later because they're not on the original schedule?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
Do we have to amend that schedule or can we just add workshops when we need to?
We can just add workshops when we need to.
Okay.
Yeah, and throughout COVID, we had to add a few emergency meetings as well. So. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the two thousand and twenty-two Board of Education meeting schedule, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving on to item three F, Approval of Authorized Signatures for the District. Julie, do you want to explain this?
Yeah, this is another academic item that is just an annual update. We update the people who are authorized to sign various documents and it's the same people. It's the superintendent, associate superintendent of business, fiscal director. It's about the position, not the person.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation. I'll second. We have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item three F, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five oh. The next item, three G, California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly District Nomination. So I would like to nominate Eleanor Evans.
Second.
Our CSBA has been so involved and we really appreciate that time and energy that you put towards that, Eleanor.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Eleanor Evans as the CSBA delegate, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. All right, congratulations, Eleanor.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And you should hear some really dynamic changes going on with CSBA this year.
All right, will keep us, keep us in the loop. So moving on to item four, Report. Dr. Vitale.
I'll keep it super short. I just want to thank the students for their reports and it's wonderful to hear about the activities going on at school and students having fun again. That's very exciting to hear. There was a concert Friday at OHS, was outside and wonderful to see the students performing again. Certainly got me in the mood for vacation, which is coming up starting December twentieth through January seventh for our students. So I just want to say thank you to all of our students for hanging in there, doing good work and thriving during this pandemic and working through the difficult situations. And to all of our staff who support them and the tremendous work that you've done to support our students and to the families, the parents, the guardians, the caregivers. We all work together to support the students and we're just very happy that we've all made it through together and our quarantine numbers have been lowered. And we have students in class, which we're very, very excited about. So I hope everyone has a wonderful time off. For those of you taking time off and those of you that are still working, I'll be working too. So we'll just enjoy this cool weather together and find, find other ways to rejuvenate. So thank you all so much. I just appreciate the work of everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. So item four B is Board Report. I'll turn it over to Vice President Raquel Alvarez. Do you have anything you want to share?
I sure do. I was able to attend the choir show over at El Camino High School, which was amazing to see the winter Wonderland, I guess, or Winter Wonderland. I don't know what exactly it was called, but it was amazing. I also was able to attend the one at Oceanside, the Christmas Bazaar. And that was fun because it was outside, like Julie said, and it was freezing cold, but we survived it with the hot chocolate that they were serving. So it was great. I was able to attend also the North County Gang Summit, which in that process was able to learn again, some more things that are going on within our community and different things that we need to continue to look at and in ways to be able to help our students and to work with our students and to just keep them safe. I want to also I want to commend our choir and the fact that they're through the, through the shows themselves. We show the wonderful and amazing diversity within our district because they, they were able to bring that in even within the show itself. And so I love that. So thank you very much for our students wanting to share within who they are and you know, everything about them through that. So just thank you for that. I will also want to applaud one of our students from OHS who made a commitment to West Point. He's one of our six students now going to West Point. So would like to applaud him because that is an amazing feat. So I think that's all I have for right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are moving on to Clerk of the Board. Mr. Mike Blessing, would you like to share anything?
No, I have no report for this end of year. I'm just, I'm glad we got here through the end of the year and looking forward to a new year with all of you. So thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Eric Joyce, would you like to share?
Yeah, a couple of things. So one, the OHS winter concert was amazing, beautiful, such a cool setup. They even had a little holiday train that the kids were able to ride. It was an awesome experience. I can't applaud them enough. We attended CSBA and learned, took in a whole bunch of information that we're going to be working with staff to make sure that we're following through with and making sure students are learning the best way they can through the pandemic and taking all that information and integrating it to what we can do. I also attended the Turkey Trot, which was amazing. I just bring that up because I saw all those records that the El Camino students, the El Camino cross-country students were doing. I can attest that they're very fast because I saw them at the beginning of the race and then by the time I got to the finish, they didn't even look like they had been running. They were so far ahead of me. It was incredible. And they had a huge pack of kids. They were having a great time. So it was really cool to see them out of dominating in, in the streets of Ocean Side on the Turkey Trot. And then the other thing is the, I was able to attend as a member of the CTE, the Career Technical Education Advisory. I think it's council. And I learned about this incredible opportunity that two of our students have earned. There are two out of thirty-six that have been selected nationwide to go into the Federal Bureau of Investigation Academy and they're coming out of our OHS Academy of Justice. And this academy includes a meeting with Supreme Court justices and Department of Homeland Security. It's really a high, a high level award. And we got two out of thirty-six nationwide. So I just want to really applaud both the students and the staff who made that happen and I hope they have an amazing trip.
Thanks for sharing that wonderful news.
Excellent. Thanks, Eric. All right, Eleanor, do you have some information you'd like to share?
Yes, I did attend the CTA workshop as well, but also I wanted for all of us to understand what California School Board Association really is. And basically it provides policy, resources and training to the member districts of CSBA. And it represents the statewide interests of public education, legal, political, legislative community and advocates for positive media coverage of the schools. As a delegate, we generally meet at the same time that CSBA has this annual education conference. This year, I was able to attend a few of the workshops, and I think it's really important that with the times that's going on, that we are able to communicate with other districts and that we are able to, to network. That is so important in terms of, you know, providing school funding, special ed, distance learning, improving student achievement, as well as budget and school safety. This month for me was Veterans Day, and coming from a military family is a really important day. So, having my father and uncles and nieces and nephews in the military, you know, it's, it's very, very heartwarming. Okay. I also want to acknowledge Transgender Day of Remembrance. I was invited to that, and one of the things that I became aware of, growing up in San Diego, a lot of the, there's a huge high rate of transgender, especially blacks that are being murdered in San Diego and nationwide, and to see all those individuals who, who had violent death and to know that I know some of them growing up in San Diego, you know, it's, it's really heartbreaking. Okay. And I'm continuing with Leon Williams Human Relations Commission. We're focusing on hate crimes and some of the school hate crimes that you probably have been reading in the newspaper. We will be working in terms of coming with solutions, and we're going to be more involved in, and cooperating, collaborating with the school districts, we hope. San Diego and Oceanside were charter cities, so we're independent. School districts are independent of the, of the city government or the county government, but at the same time, you know, we do serve, you know, the same population, and education is the foundation for democracy. And I think more and more that it's important that our students learn civility, learn just their own true history, okay, and that they gain appreciation of other people. So, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Sounds like you've been busy. I had a really busy month. I attended the Oceanside Unified School District Special Education Task Force, and we're going to hear more about that with our special education report later tonight. Exciting work that we're doing with our stakeholders. I also attended with Trustee Alvarez, a meeting with the leadership of CSBA. Trustee Alvarez and I also attended a North County Gang Summit, shared a lot of information, which led us to meeting with our Oceanside Police Chief, and we were discussing all kinds of different things and getting some information, which is great, on how to support our students. I also attended LCAP Stakeholders Meeting recently, and we had a San Diego County Advancing Equity with Data virtual listening session, which was really interesting to hear perspectives from individuals all over San Diego County. And last but not least, my son, who took up the standing base this year, had a music concert at Chavez Middle School, and I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Washburn, the most amazing music teacher. She did pods of students, pods of family, kept it safe, and we, first concert we've had in a really long time, and it was really great to see the students and their families. So, thanks, Mrs. Washburn, for the hard work. All right, moving on to item.
I have something. My niece is starting at Palm Quest, and she's had an extremely positive and welcoming day. She loves it, loves her teacher, loves the students. She says they just embraced her literally and really accept her. So, thank you, Palm Quest. Thank you, Ms. Smith, it's the name of her teacher. So, that's a really.
Got another good student. Great. Thanks, Eleanor. So, moving on, we have a new item on our agenda, and I'm excited to say, to share it with you. As a school board, our job is to support teaching and learning for all our students in Oceanside Unified, and we cannot do that without our labor partners. So, item four C, we're going to hear from the Oceanside Teachers Association President Tiffany Cooper Ortega, and she's going to provide us an update. Hi, Tiffany.
Hi, Stacy. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. I do want to second what you said about Joannita Washburn. Amazing. All four of my kids went through music with her at Chavez. Amazing. Love it. Good evening. I am Tiffany Cooper Ortega, and I'm honored to be able to report on behalf of the accomplished and esteemed members of Oceanside Teachers Association as their president. Next slide, please. In addition to the regular meetings between our Executive Board and Representative Counsel, ODA-led leadership met with the Superintendent, Superintendents of Human Resources, and Curriculum and Instruction, as well as other site leaders. ODA members and leadership worked collaboratively with OUSD to solidify dates on our future school calendars and began engaging in the development cycle for the Local Control Accountability Plan. ODA members on the SPED Task Force are working alongside our colleagues from CSBA, district leadership, and parents to streamline special education delivery and resources in OUSD. In an effort to encourage and celebrate shared decision-making at sites, ODA and HR held a joint training for site teams, including site leadership and site representatives from labor associations on the RBO Problem-Solving Model. ODA also continues to work closely with the Directors of Human Resources and Special Education to monitor and maintain balanced SPED caseload allocations across the district so that our ed specialists can provide students the support and instruction they need. Also, as pandemic-related mandates from the state and county Department of Public Health are fluid, ODA continues to work with human resources to monitor and modify our safety protocols as needed. Next slide, please. Oceanside Teachers Association was also able to support members from our local association as they attended the CTA-sponsored learning opportunities. Next slide. Now, I'd like to celebrate our amazing ODA members and the wonderful things they are implementing at their sites. Thank you to OUSD Teacher of the Year Alyssa Schram for sharing highlights from Del Rio, my first school for 22 years, I think I was there. I couldn't help but include the student-created portrait, which was obviously completed on a Red for Ed Day, as her ODA shirt is apparent. You can see it in the picture. I love it. Next slide, please. The teachers at Del Rio have found innovative ways to be able to provide intensive intervention to students. So, while students are receiving art STEM lessons in the lab, the teacher is able to pull students to provide strategic targeted instruction to students in a small group or one-to-one situation, which Ms. Anzvatsky is doing in this picture. Next slide, please. Also, fourth and fifth grade students were selected for the student leadership team sponsored by their school counselor, Lori Lyon. In addition to Peace Patrol on playgrounds and Safety Patrol at arrival and dismissal, this group has created their first episode of Del Rio's School News Program, which is being produced by their principal, Ms. Laura Ho. Next slide. Now, we're moving over to Surfside Education Academy, which, by the way, was my other school that I worked at. Thank you for the coordinated submission by Sean Peterson, Lisa Boyster, and Jessica Brimmer. Next slide. Surfside is focusing on the RIR protocol, which is recognize, interrupt, and interrupt and repair. Principal Eric Franzen asked teachers to share vignettes of their RIR implementation, and he shared the, one of these with me. Next slide. The teacher shared that when they overheard a student say loudly, "He's harassing me," the teacher approached the group and ensured that everyone was okay first, and then explained that harassment is real and can be a scary situation for people that might actually be experiencing it. This led to a rich conversation where students realized that making a joke about harassment could be hurtful to some people and resulted in an increased awareness that, that made them realize that what we say impacts those around us. Next slide. So, finally, please allow me this moment of personal privilege. I really want to take a moment to thank all of the ODA members who may still be at work in their classroom grading papers, adding content to their online classroom, completing independent study agreements or submitting grades, those colleagues that might be braving the rainy night in order to find the perfect-sized macaroni for that holiday ornament, or that little something that will help make their students' holiday more special, those members that might be spending their night communicating with parents and students, or those that are tuned into a school board meeting in the interest of being an engaged stakeholder, or even to those members that have fallen fast asleep because their mind is saturated and they've been on their feet all day. I want to take a minute to say thank you to all of you for all that you do in the service of educating your Oceanside students. The good things that are happening in this district are happening because of you, and they're happening because of your dedication to your profession and to our students. So, thank you so much, and thank you for the time, Dr. Begin. I promise the rest of them will not be this long.
Thank you for your update. We have item four D, which we would usually hear an update from CSBA president, but she was out sick today, so we're looking forward to hearing from her in January. So, moving right along, we are moving on to item five, the general consent item. I believe we have a public comment?
Yes, we do. On 5K, Graham Fraser.
Dr. Begin, I've attempted to promote Graham Fraser twice, and he declined both times, so I'm taking that as, I do not want to speak.
Okay, he's on the agenda again later, so we'll try again. Thank you so much. Moving right along, let's, item, general consent items, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Do I have any questions, discussion? Looking at my board colleagues. All right, seeing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the general consent item, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Five. Carries, five oh. So, moving on to item six, presentations. We have two presentations tonight. I'm so excited about both of them. So, our first one is on the community school update, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Dr. Lovey, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to share the work around community schools. I know this evening we have our community schools coordinators ready and listening, and they have worked very hard on this presentation. I'm excited to provide you with an update on our planning for the community schools in Oceanside. Next slide, please. As we explore community schools, it was evident that the need to be clear about the goals for community school and why we were proposing implementing this system in our district needed to be clear. Key to this work was understanding that all actions being taken by the community schools are in service of learning for all students, and that successful schools provide students with the education supports they need to be successful, productive adults. We know that in some communities, the barriers to success and learning are greater, and that by addressing those barriers and meaningfully connecting with our families and our community, that we can leverage our community resources to improve student outcomes. So, as we look at the community journey, we can see that this, we start exploring community schools in the spring of 2021, when the Board of Education provided the direction to include community schools as part of our LCAP. Four schools were identified to be the first community schools in Oceanside Unified School District. These include Jefferson Middle School, Mission Elementary, Laurel Elementary, and Libby. As a district leadership team was established in August, which identified the key documents for our work and building on a common understanding of community schools. Next slide, please. The document that we have been using and selected to guide our work is Building Community Schools: A Guide for Action, developed by the Children's Aid Society. This document represents the best practices in community schools, which we strive to implement. Next slide, please. In the guiding document, the development of community schools are outlined in stages, which are constantly evolving as we learn more and identify new areas for service and growth. Currently, we are exploring, in the exploring and emerging areas. Next slide, please. Community school work is grounded in the developmental triangle that puts children at the center of all we do, with the family and community and school all providing support. The families and community support include high-quality core instructional programming, expanded learning, health services being brought into the school rather than referring out, and having the community and families work as full partners in the leadership of the direction of the school. Next slide, please. Key to the community schools model is having a full-time dedicated community school coordinator. These are managers who are in full partnership with the school leadership team and work to conduct local needs assessments, identifying community partners, and able to increase the supports that are brought into the school and understand the needs of the families. They are best able, they are thinking about how to allocate the resources in the community to best fit the needs, and then finally, to continue to evaluate our program as we move forward to ensure that all of our actions are put forward in service of learning. Next slide, please. After an extensive recruitment, we had more than 70 applicants, and we selected four community coordinators in November. Our community coordinators work with, to both collaboratively together so that they can leverage their diverse strengths and as part of the school leadership team. Ms. Gibney is at Libby, and she was born and raised in Vista and has a bachelor's degree and a master's degree. Ms. Jackie Martinez is assigned to Jefferson and was born and raised in Oceanside, has a BA and a master's degree, and is a graduate of El Camino High School. Ms. Rosanna Martinez is assigned to Mission and has a bachelor's degree and is a graduate of Oceanside High, and Mr. Kohler is assigned to Laurel and is a double-major bachelor's degree in Spanish and Portuguese. Next slide. The community coordinator team understands that how we start a project can have a huge impact on the long-term success, to ensure that the things we put into place become part of the culture and focus of our district. They have worked in a comprehensive understanding of the community and of the school district to make sure that they have an increasing comprehension of the collaboration needed, they have coherence in their work as a team and at each site, and that they are focused on the commitment that the board has made in visioning for a community school. Next slide, please. In order to support communication, the team will have a monthly newsletter that is published using the smore so that we can evaluate the readership and who we're reaching, and that'll help our staff and families become more involved in the community schools and be able to share the successes and resources available across all four of our community school sites. Next slide, please. In order to build coherence throughout our system, the community schools coordinators looked at the job descriptions between the community schools coordinator and the community school advisor. One is a management position and one is a classified position. In both jobs, the family engagement, sourcing of resources, and coordinating activities are key duties. What makes each different is that the community school coordinator works at the macro level with the whole community with, to focus on the greatest needs of the students, and the school community advisors work more one-on-one with families and with our multilingual learners and focus on engaging the families one-on-one. Next slide. In our guiding document, four capacities are outlined. These are comprehensiveness, collaboration, coherence, and commitment. As we evaluate our implementation of the community schools, we will continue to monitor those capacities closely to ensure that we are continuing to follow the best practices for community schools. Next slide. In the next semester, we'll be focusing our work on the core components of community schools that are in the service of student learning. These are the health supports, ongoing academic enrichment, including early childhood education, after-school and intercession planning and enrichment, and the engagement with parent, caregivers, and guardians in adult education and leadership opportunities. Next slide. As we move forward, we've set benchmarks for implementation. We have set tasks and identified key evaluation markers. We have set tasks and identified key evaluation markers at two months, five months, nine months, and beyond. As we implement the model, we'll continue to monitor and adjust our work to respond to our new learning, emerging best practices, and the opportunities that are presented by our community and our parents. Next slide, please. We will be working on building our site teams starting in February, March, April, and May, developing focus groups and analysis of our data, both on student achievement and resources, attendance, and well-being, and developing an 18-month action plan for each school site with specific long and short-term goals. Next slide. As we continue this work, we will always be thinking, what are community schools? The key to this is the transformation of schools into a family-centered community hub in service of student success. Next slide. As we realize the vision for community schools, we will ensure that our work is transformative, personalized, empowering, and culturally affirming, so that the school can ensure that students' needs are met and their interests addressed as they engage in the learning, with again, the student at the center with healthy development, learning, and thriving. Next slide, please. As we look forward, we know that we always want to think about our funding, and we're proud to share that we have been awarded $75,000 to Jefferson Middle School for a wellness center funded by United Healthcare. Our community coordinator at Jefferson is working with the team at United Healthcare to outline the services and activities for the wellness center. As we build the program, currently, our LCAP is funding the community schools programming. And in order to continue the work, we will be looking at for grant opportunities, both those that are entitlement grants and those grants that are competitive from the CDE to expand our work. As we know that additional funds are being set aside for new budgets, we continue to monitor for when we can be part of the competitive processes to get additional funding. Next slide. As outlined in our guiding document for best practices, building a community school, we will be working on the assessment process, including conducting a resource inventory of existing programs and services within our community that we can better leverage to support our families. Our coordinators will be reviewing archival data, will be interviewing key stakeholders, and also looking for ways to assess the needs. Key to community schools is for us to go into the community and talk with families to help them drive what they need rather than us coming and telling them what they may need. We will be sharing our findings and recommendations with our community members, with our teachers and staff, interviewing and collaborating with our teaching staff and our CSDA membership, and then defining the goals that will be both short and long-term, as we talked about, with specific markers and data to back up the progress towards the ideal state. Next slide, please. As our coordinators have entered their school site, they have expressed their appreciation for the warm welcome provided by the teachers, classified staff, and students that they have met. They all say that it is the most wonderful thing to see the community come together and as they greet them at the start of the day and at the end of the day. Next slide, please. We want to thank you for your leadership and commitment to our students, staff, and communities. The support put forward by the Board of Education for the community schools is greatly appreciated, and we know that we will continue to learn, grow together, and increase the effectiveness of our schools and community to ensure that every student has the opportunity to do whatever they want as they become adults in our society. Thank you.
Wow, thank you, Dr. Lovey, for that presentation. Board members, do you have any comments, questions, for staff?
Eleanor Evans, I thought the presentation was excellent. As you well know, I've had, I've seen the experience of community schools, and I was not impressed. From what you presented tonight, it is extremely impressive. It's very detailed, it's data-driven. You guys really did your research, and as a board member, we appreciate it. Excellent job, excellent presentation, and I am excited. I wasn't excited initially, as I was thinking, here we go again, but you're using a different approach. You are, you have a leadership pattern established. There's accountability, and it's focused, it's truly focused on the student, and I can see that the teachers are receptive, and there's compatibility and collaboration going on. Yeah, so again, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you. We have an amazing team. Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
I'm thrilled to see you go forward. I won't speak for long, because I know we got a lot of stuff to do tonight, but I am, I'm really excited about the presentation and how structured it is for our staff. I'm really excited to get out there and spread the good word around town, because you know, these, these are really transformative programs, so. It's just a dream to have the school really come into the, the community, come into the school and see that as the hub. So, I'm so excited to see where it leads and, and to join the meetings at my own children's school for their community school advisor. So, thank you.
I just want to thank you all for the work that was put into this. You know me and my data and loving all that stuff, so because it is data-driven, I really look forward to the work and collaboration that you are going to have with the community as a whole, because I think it's going to show us everything that we need to have to have our students succeed, and that's the most important thing overall, obviously. So, I look forward to all the amazing work that the community directors are going to be doing, everything that you guys are already doing. I thank you so much again for all this work, for taking it on, because I know we were, you know, it was something else that we added, that we brought in, and so thank you so much for, for taking it on and making it something that I think is going to be amazing. And I, like Eric, I look forward to just hearing about it within our community and talking about it and just seeing the amazing work that it's going to be doing. So, thank you so much for all your, your commitment to our families and to our students, everybody. Thank you.
I want to recognize definitely our site principals who have embraced the work and are working to, in, to really embrace the vision, to share the good news, and they have been doing a lot of work and really making sure that our community coordinators are successful and part of the leadership team. And I also want to recognize Mr. Svedley, who's also been playing a big part in this, and also Mr. Thibodeau. So, it's really been a team effort, so just the way it's supposed to be.
Great. Thank you for sharing, Dr. Lovey. And we're going to move on to our next presentation, 6B, Special Education Task Force, presented by Dr. Dardis.
Yep, Dr. Lovey, you want to kick us off?
Yes, so, good evening. We'll be talking about our Special Education Task Force, and this will be presented by Dr. Dardis, our Director of Special Education.
Good evening, Dr. Begin, Board members, Dr. Vitalian Cabinet. I am Leah Dardis, Director of Special Education. This evening's presentation will be dedicated to the effort that we began in 2019 and are continuing presently to address special education. Next slide, please. Oceanside has been funded for the 2021-22 Supporting Inclusive Practices Grant. The logic model and blueprint are derived from the best practices as defined in research and literature in the fields of inclusion, education, and change management. Their goal is to provide the grantees with a solid framework upon which to base their work in improving inclusion within their organizations. As part of the grant, we continue to collaborate with Dr. Kristen Brooks from Supporting Inclusive Practices. Next slide, please. These graphs show the trends in enrollment for our students with disabilities and trends in enrollment for the entire district. The first graph and table reflect the upward and downward trends in enrollment. Please note, the variation from the school year 1617 to 1920 was an enrollment decrease of 188 students. The second graph and table reflect a similar trend in enrollment with a decrease of 1,571 students. When we began the Listening Tours in 2019, the enrollment for all students was 18,165, of which 2,821 were students with disabilities. That percentage was 14.8%. To compare with currently, our uncertified CalPads percentage of students with disabilities is 15%. We compare this data to show that while we began our journey in 2019, the pandemic slowed our progress, and now we are increasing our momentum to address the concerns raised in the Listening Tour. Next slide, please. So, let's examine who our students with disabilities are in Oceanside. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires public schools to provide special education and related services to eligible students, but not every child who struggles in school qualifies. To be covered, a child's school performance must be adversely affected by a disability in one of the 13 categories. Children with disabilities are a diverse group of individuals exhibiting strengths and challenges in many different areas. Disabilities may also be mild, moderate, and severe. They can include mental, physical, behavioral, and emotional disabilities. Next slide, please. Special education is a broad term used by the law to describe specially-designed instruction that meets the unique needs of a child who has a disability. These services are provided by the public school system and are free of charge. Services can include instruction in the classroom, at home, and in institutions. In Oceanside, our students' most frequent qualifying conditions are specific learning disability, speech or language impairments, autism, and other health impairments. Of the 2,510 students, 39% have specific learning disability as a primary disability. Students with speech or language impairments make up 18% of the population. This is followed by other health impairments at 16% and autism at 16%. Next slide, please. I am so proud of the staff of Oceanside. We have hard-working staff and support personnel at all of our sites from preschool to our North Coastal Consortium for Special Education Collaborative Team Award winners, the Adult Transition Program. At school sites, the staff supporting students with disabilities are first and foremost our general education teachers. We have full-time counselors, site leaders, and each site has at least one full-time assistant principal. We value the roles that our school psychologists and school nurses play as leaders of the assessment process and stewards of health. For our students who require specialized academic instruction, we appreciate our educational specialists who support students with disabilities that are mild, moderate, and severe. 39% of our students who have a specific learning disability are case-managed by our teachers with mild, moderate credentials. Our speech-language pathologists work to prevent, assess, diagnose, and treat speech, language, social communication, and cognitive communication for our students. Our mobility team is composed of the adaptive physical education teachers, physical therapists, and occupational therapists, and much love and appreciation to our support personnel of dedicated paraprofessionals and school bus drivers. Next slide, please. Prior to Dr. Vitali's appointment as the Superintendent of OUSD, the Oceanside Teachers Association and the California School Employees Association members expressed concerns about the services and supports needed to best support the success of students with disabilities. In September 2019, Dr. Vitali, partnering with ODA and CSDA leadership, launched a Listening Tour and Survey. While the COVID-19 pandemic put many areas and processes on pause, there were areas that could be immediately addressed from the gathered concerns, and we will highlight those in future slides. With Spring 2021 promising hope for full-time in-person instruction, we reignited the process by asking some guided questions about our current situation, how concerns may have evolved, and what was our ideal state. In the fall, our Special Education Committee was formed, was reformed. We realized the need to expand our task force and have added interested and dedicated people to the team. Next slide, please. The goal of the Listening Process from the beginning has been to meet the needs of students with disabilities, reduce the stress on staff, and build effective partnerships with parents. These goals have become even more important as we continue to navigate our way through our current reality. Next slide, please. The discovery process was conducted through a survey and face-to-face meetings that took place between the months of September and December 2019. There were 336 staff who responded to the survey. Additionally, 30 face-to-face meetings were conducted across the district, including meetings at each of our school sites. And while there are many aspects of the progress, the process that we had to pause in March 2020, we recognized that there were items we could address as a system to alleviate some of those concerns. Next slide, please. OUSD continues to collaborate with Dr. Brooks from Supporting Inclusive Practices to facilitate deep and meaningful discussions centered on every student being educated in an environment that is intentionally designed, equitable, and inclusive. These discussions are determining the key results for mapping our journey for 2021 to 2024. At present, we have identified 64 stakeholders from a variety of classifications. The table here demonstrates attendance from our October meeting. Next slide, please. This overarching process for the facilitation by Dr. Brooks has been about clarifying our ideal state through the use of Google Jamboard, a digital whiteboard that allows for remote or in-person collaboration on a shared space. We have been able to sketch out our ideas, concerns, questions, or draw collaboratively and synchronously. It has been a beautiful process to be a part of, and as we define and clarify our ideas, we also annotate our thoughts on organization and how that might look in its ideal state. The following slides will outline the findings of 2019 and the best thinking of the 2021 Task Force, as well as progress that has been made in the last three years. Next slide, please. The first 2019 finding that we are addressing is students with disabilities unable to access the curriculum. This is a finding close to my heart and all the staff that I connect with. The considerations that we are discussing are increased students with disabilities included in general education, implementation of effective practices for student success teams, professional learning on de-escalation and crisis prevention, behavior support paraprofessionals trained in a D site. Next slide, please. The second finding is paraprofessional shortage and assignment changes. We consistently monitor our classified staffing. There are 330 paraprofessionals allocated. Eight of our 23 sites are fully staffed. 272 positions are filled. This, there is a 21% vacancy, and we are deeply concerned about this vacancy rate. We are aggressively recruiting high-quality individuals to serve in this role. Of our certificated staff, we have 128 educational specialists, and there is less than a 2% vacancy due to increasing special education enrollments. Next slide, please. Our next finding is lengthy process to hire special education teachers and paraprofessionals. The Human Resources Department staff reviewed their internal processes. This resulted in a streamlined process for hiring high-quality teachers and paraprofessionals. I am continually amazed at how fast Dr. Blackman and her staff are expediting the process. We have worked on recruiting applicants for a monthly job fair. Our first job fair resulted in many new hires and transfer, and due to the continuous recruitment on EdJoin, we've been able to hire applicants on a, on a continuous basis. Lastly, we reevaluated the paraprofessional test to better align with our job requirements. Additionally, human resources staff will give feedback on areas to study for candidates. Next slide, please. Our fourth finding, inadequate time to collaborate among general educators and education specialists. These considerations that we are discussing are systematic collaboration time between the general education teachers and educational specialists, conducting annual surveys to staff about the resources and training. We have aligned paraeducator hours for all classifications to 30 hours a week. The task force has recommended two hours a month of paid professional learning for paraprofessionals outside of the regular assignment starting in second semester. Next slide, please. Our second to the last finding, the number of students with disabilities assigned to educators, and there has been great progress in caseloads. Dr. Blackman, Mrs. Navyarvea, and I meet weekly to monitor the caseloads across all, all schools. The Special Education Department program coordinators weekly audit the caseloads for not only educational specialists, but also our school psychologists and speech-language pathologists. As we determine situational impact, we have allocated more classified and/or certificated staff. From our mild-modered education specialists that service students in transitional kindergarten to adult, the contracted minimum is 24 to 1. For our moderate-severe educational specialist for transitional kinder to adult, the contracted maximum is 11 to 1. For educational pre-specialist for preschool, our contracted maximum is 23 to 1. Overall, across all the caseloads, there is a decrease of 1 since 2019. Next slide, please. Our last finding, limited training for paraprofessionals and teachers. The considerations that we are discussing are annual surveys to staff about the resources and training needed to be done, conducting conducting joint professional learning opportunities for certificated staff that can be based on individual growth and need, promoting attendance to an implementation of professional learning on de-escalation and crisis prevention. Next slide, please. In planning out our next steps, we recognize that we do not work in isolation. I think of Oceanside Unified as a coastal live oak tree. So imagine the board of trustees, our superintendent, and cabinet are the roots. The departments that provide nutrition, health, and transportation services are the soil, water, and nutrients. The directors and other district office staff make up the trunk. Our schools are the branches, and flying the students are the leaves. We at the ESS are here to cultivate an environment for our school leaders to be transformational and structurally oriented. We do this by increasing professional learning for all staff, providing sustainable plans for collaboration, establishing innovative recruitment processes, supporting inclusive practices, building caregiver, guardian, and parent networks, developing a five-year plan, analyzing data for students with disabilities, and developing effective transition plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DiArtis, for doing the hard work. I am looking forward to seeing you regularly at our board meetings to provide updates on our special education task force and what's going on. Thank you for doing the hard work on this. Do we have any questions, board colleagues? I hear crickets. All right. Thank you, Dr. DiArtis. All right, moving on, we have a long agenda tonight. So moving on to item seven, personnel. Seven A is annual credentials report to the Board of Education, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Thank you. Yes, President Begin. This item is for board consideration in situations when teachers are assigned to elective classes that are not credentialed. There needs to be three things that occur. One is the teachers must be qualified to meet the requirements, two, they must give their consent to teach these assignments, and three, to meet EdCode four-four-two-five-eight-point-nine. These teaching assignments must be approved by the board. This item is for board consideration for those teachers to teach these elective courses.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have two seconds. A second. Do we have any questions?
No.
All right. All in favor of approving item seven A, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving on to item seven B, approval of new class specification, systems technician.
President Begin and board, this item is for consideration. There's, we're working on a restructuring with the IT department. Just want to emphasize this is a cost-neutral change. There's no increase. It really has to do with the reassignment of technicians going from the systems analyst to this new creative position called systems technician to help streamline work and provide better services to our staff.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, you guys are racing. It's fun.
I have a question. Will the IT team, will they be in one location or will they be assigned different area, different schools?
These are centrally assigned positions that provide support to different sites across the district. So they have regional coverage. So it's divided up by the system techs to help support staff.
Okay, thank you.
How many staff members do we have supporting sites with any technical difficulties that they have on a given day? Sorry, I did not get this ahead of time. I just know we've ramped up to go one-to-one with our devices, and as a teacher, if you have a plan that's, that involves a specific piece of technology and that goes down, it can be difficult to manage.
Yeah, Mr. Joyce, we have about twenty employees that work in the IT department to serve our students and staff and school sites in all the IT technical areas, including curriculum support, problem-solving, connectivity, all the types of things that would be involved, the IT department.
Thank you.
No more questions or comments. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven B, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Dr. McAtter. Moving on to item eight, curriculum and instruction. Item eight A is acceptance of the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant.
Yes, good evening, board. This is the block grant that at our previous meeting we described to you, and a vote of acceptance will allow us to access this funding for professional learning.
That require a motion? You're asking for a motion?
It's a motion to approve acceptance of the grant. Thank you.
I will make a motion to accept the grant.
All second. We have a first and a second. Do we have any questions?
Oh, looking forward to it's the fruits of almost a four-million-dollar grant. It's really exciting.
And it'll definitely help with some of the, what the special education task force came out with. So. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight A, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving on to item eight B, Acceptance of Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant.
Yes, this grant is a competitive grant. It's very exciting. It's in partnership with San Diego County Office of Education and the Contra Costa County Office of Education. This was a competitive process to focus on MTSS, focus on dyslexia and students with special needs. It's a one-million-dollar grant over three years with a priority on reading, so all students reading.
Can you approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight B, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Moving on to item eight C, approval of state preschool, California Department of Education Continued Funding Application Resolution Number Eighteen.
Yes, this is approval of being able to reimburse for our state preschool program. Our state preschool program is a program for our youngest learners based on income limits, and with this approval, with moving approval of acceptance, we will be able to be reimbursed for our costs up to one-point-two million dollars approximately.
I love all this good news. I'll make a motion to approve. Right, we got a first and a second. Any questions?
Yeah, if we increase how many students we serve with this, are we reimbursed? reimbursed for that? I mean, how is the number determined?
It is based on the services provided, and I can provide additional detail on how that reimbursement goes forward. So in the other two grants, we have that money and we spend to it. This is more like a chance where the number of students we serve, and then we collect the funding for that.
So theoretically, if we expanded our preschool, we would get more reimbursement? Do we, is there like a limit on how expanded our preschool could be?
It's limited by several things. Its licensure is one, and so licensure involves the number of students. It involves the facilities that are involved because you need to have bathrooms and, and other specific facility licensures. We have to apply for those licenses, and based on our licenses and our facilities, there are certain maximums. So that's one part of the equation. The other part of the equation is the number of families that qualify based on income. So this is not a universal preschool or nor could we expand it in that way using this funding because of the fact that it is based on a funding mechanism based on people's income levels. So one of the things that we always want to think about is how do we expand to everyone who's in need? And so as we think about this, there are going to be opportunities moving forward, expanded TK, that more students could be served. But right now with preschool, it's really around income, our licenses, and our facilities needs.
I just asked because we just talked about our community schools, and those four schools all have above ninety percent of students that would, I assume would qualify. Is it the same qualifiers that we use for free and reduced lunch?
I might have to check with our coordinator, Amaret Reed. I'm not sure if it's exactly the same number. I think there's different calculations, but Mission does have preschool at their site. We have it at Del Rio, Mission, North Terrace, Santa Margarita Elementary Schools. But people who live in all parts of our, of our district can attend at those different sites. It's not drawn. So you could live in a different area, and if your income qualifies you, then they could be placed at any of those sites.
The only other thing is I would, I would think that the students who qualify because of low income would probably have less mobility than other students. So that may be a factor we want to look at if we're thinking about expanding this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great questions. All right, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight C, say aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Moving on, thank you, Dr. Lovey. Moving on to item nine, which is our business item. Nine A, I'm going to open up a public hearing at seven twenty-six P. This is a public hearing regarding the annual developer fee reports for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Do we have any public speakers?
No, we do not.
Okay, we have no public speakers, so I'm going to close the public hearing at seven twenty-six PM. So moving on to item nine B, approval of resolution number fifteen, adopting the findings contained within the annual developer fee report twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. The district is required to prepare an annual report of the developer fees collected for residential and commercial development projects within one hundred eighty days of the end of the fiscal year. This report must be reviewed by the Board of Education at a regularly scheduled meeting. It's recommended that the Board of Education consider and adopt the findings contained in the annual developer fee report.
Move approval.
All second. Do we have any questions for staff? Right, see no questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item nine B, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on to item nine C, approval of new Oceanside Unified District logo.
All right, good evening, Board of Education. I'm very excited to be presenting to you tonight the three final designs for our district logo. Let's go ahead and get to slide two, the next slide. You'll remember back in our July meeting, the board voted to redesign the district logo. And following that meeting, we received bids from three design firms and hired the Oceanside Company Alpha Graphics. They partner with a local firm called TriJ Advertising, and I'm going to refer to them moving forward as the design team. Next, we sent out a survey to families, students, and staff to get their feedback on what they would like to see for the new district logo. And we asked them a few things, like what would you like the logo to include? What words come to mind when you think of OUSD? And we even asked them their thoughts on keeping or moving away from the lighthouse. Now, we received a hundred and twenty responses from that survey, and many people who responded spoke of the diversity that makes up OUSD and the importance of being a coastal community, and a lot of people did want to move away from the lighthouse and see something new. We then invited the community to be part of a logo selection committee. We received thirty-three applications and selected ten people. Let's move on to the next slide. The logo committee was made up of two high school students, five staff members, and three community members. We shared the public survey with the logo committee and the design team. And before the first meeting, the design team gave members of the logo committee another survey to get their initial feedback, and they were asked a variety of questions about branding and keywords that represent the district. Now, the logo committee and the design team looked at the logos, logos from across the country, both in and out of education, and the committee decided, based on feedback, to actually move away from the lighthouse, but they did want to see a different physical representation of OUSD, so they considered the pier. The design team presented several logo options with the Oceanside Pier. The committee decided that the pier wasn't a strong enough representation of the district, and it didn't want to be attached to something like a pier that is not managed by OUSD. So the committee felt strongly about a symbol that represents diversity and the components that make up the district. They wanted something that is unique, forward-thinking, and that will stand the test of time. Let's go ahead and go to slide four. This is option one. This is centered around a symbol that is made up of different parts with different colors and sizes. And when you combine all of those parts, they come together to form the O in Oceanside Unified. Now, what's great about this option and others to follow is that it allows each viewer to have their own experience and interpretation of what they see. Now, some can see a sun, the sky, a wave in the land, and this design was very popular among the logo committee, so they wanted to see it in a variety of colors and uses. Let's go to slide five. This is option two. It's the same O, but this time in shades of blue. Again, still representing the diversity in shape and still open to interpretation. Now, some see this as a wave in its different stages, from the small swell to the cresting powerful breaker. Again, united by their shades of blue, and again, coming together to create that O that makes Oceanside Unified. Let's now go to slide six. This is the final option. We take that O and make it part of Oceanside. Now, the components that make up the O are slightly different, and we have a different color palette. Let's move on now to slide seven. Here are all three options together. I want to thank the members of the logo committee, our design team, and everyone who gave us their feedback. And Board of Education, we look forward to your decision. Thank you.
I will open up to my board colleagues. Any thoughts, questions?
I just have a remark or a question. I know I've asked it before, but just to openly ask it was because we are looking at the diversity and because we did ask about the diversity to happen, changing part of the logo monthly to fit, obviously, the cultural parts of our community too, to be able to put even the the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month or anything like that, and changing a part of the logo so that it fits our community because we are a diverse community. I love that about our community, and so being able to put that on there somehow and monthly change it on our website so that it fits and works for our families and our students. That would be my only request.
I, I really like option one, so I'll just throw that out there right now. I don't know if any of you agree with me. I like option one. They're all great.
Option one.
Yeah, we'll put the options back up on that final slide. There we go. So you can see them all three side by side.
I, when I look at these, I try and think of them on everything, you know, on stickers and all the things that we would want to use to promote the district. So I try and think of it in those terms. I really, I like contrasting colors. I think for me, option one is, is closest to something that has good contrast. I, I'd love it if our colors were a little bit bolder, but option one is probably is, is my, my preferred at this time.
I can, I'll comment on, I, when I initially saw it, I, I gotta say, I liked option three initially, and then I started thinking about it a little bit, and that, those actually are the Sprinter colors, which surprisingly has lasted twenty-some years. I'm just amazed that they still look fresh and vibrant on the Sprinter. Train, train cars going down and through the city, but I, I did like that initially, but I can get behind option one. I, I don't want to redesign it up here. I mean, if we don't like any of these, then we need to maybe send them back and have somebody else, you know, take another shot at it, but I, I can go with option one for sure.
What I like, what I like about option one is that it blends in. The symbol to stand by itself, or as it is now, and above the word Oceanside. Option three, I feel like there's a little bit of fighting going on in terms of the symbol and Sean's side. And option two. I don't know, it reminds me of a doesn't remind me away, reminds me of a tire. So I'm going to say option, option one.
Is there any appetite for color mixing?
I know. No, and Donald couldn't explain why the committee really went through that. Donald, you want to explain some of that conversation?
We did. Eric, could you please repeat your question one more time?
Just asking about the colors. Is there a specific reason that option one has those specific colors?
We wanted a variety, the logo committee and the feedback that we got, they wanted a variety of colors. Something that was, you know, really representative of our environment and just to give further diversity through color. We have diversity through shape. Initially, we started in the middle with option two. And that design was something that the logo committee really loved, but they asked to see it in a variety of colors. So we did explore it in in colors beyond that, what you're seeing here. But what the logo committee came back with was this first option here, which gives it that that peak of yellow, which, you know, is interpreted in a lot of different ways. Again, a lot of people seeing that as the sun. But they just wanted a diversity of color here to to go with the diversity of shape.
I think option one has a lot of symbolism in terms of interpretation. I didn't see it as the sun, I saw it as sand. And with this seagull, I knew we do want our students to fly very high, but at the same time, we want them to remain in Oceanside and eliminate the brain drain that goes on with our students. I like the fact that there's a circle to indicate how inclusive we are. And the variation in the shades of blue, they're, they're not fighting. I think it's nice. I like it.
Thanks, Eleanor. We haven't heard from Raquel. Do you want to weigh in, Raquel, before I call for a vote?
I like one, but again, I just to be able to change it monthly, you know how Google does and everything, they change all their stuff. I want to be able to do that because I want to show off all our diversity within our schools and our students because I'm about our students. Because all means all, so I want to celebrate every one of our students and staff in everything that we do. So that would be the one that I would go with only because of the variants of color. So that's what I would go with.
All right. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think we have a board policy that supports that kind of celebration of our students in place. That's exciting.
Cool. All right, it sounds like we might have consensus here. So I'm gonna, I'm going to make a motion that we approve option one for our new logo design. Do I have a
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All favor of option one as our new logo design, say aye.
Aye.
Wow, we have, we have agreement. We have a new logo. I can't wait, Donald, to see it behind me on my Zoom. Thank you. For that hard work. And thank, thank you to the committee. Your time.
Yep.
All right, moving right on, right along. We are on item nine D, approval of resolution number sixteen, approving sale of property Pacifica and making related findings.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. The district desires to enter into the negotiated purchase and sale agreement whereby the buyer will purchase the property for fifteen point eight million dollars under certain terms and conditions. This resolution approves the sale of the property pursuant to the P S A and authorizes staff to move forward with the execution of the P S A and sale of the property pursuant to its terms. And it determines that the sale is exempt from CEQA and authorizes staff to file a notice of exemption. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve resolution number sixteen as presented and authorize staff to proceed with the sale of the property.
So all right. Do I have a second? Um, I have, I have some wording I need to state to make sure we're all legit. So the board will review the top two offers as selected and analyzed by the district staff and legal counsel. These, yeah, we know.
So for this, you just need to take a motion and have a second and a discussion and vote. What you're reading is for the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
No worries. No worries.
No problem.
All right, I have a first, I have a second.
Sorry, I thought I jumped out too fast.
No, you're great, you're you're great.
There we go. Now, this is a great, great, great deal, I think, and a good, good, good developer we've got. And wish, wish good luck with the city to approve this project for us in the next two years.
And can you just confirm, do we have a first and a second? I just recall a first being Mike Blessing.
I'll second if there's no second.
Right, we only had a motion, so now we need a second. And I'll take my seventh.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any other comments from board colleagues or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item nine D, approval of resolution number sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh.
I'm actually nay on this one.
You're nay on this one? Sorry, I didn't hear. For, do you want to share why or?
I just, um, the, the process is really complicated and I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's in the best interest of the credit community in the area because of the complications, so.
All right. So motion carries four one. All right, moving on, sorry, I did that before. Thank you, Dr. Vitale, for catching that. Moving on to agenda item nine E, this is the consideration of real property offers and authorizing the negotiation of a letter of intent and purchase and sale agreement. The board will review.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I apologize.
On June twenty-third, twenty twenty, the district's Board of Education adopted a recommendation by the district's facility advisory committee to declare the Garrison property surplus. Therefore, the district offered the property for sale to public entities. During negotiations, the city shared an interest, but that they only sought three acres. In consultation with its legal counsel, the district determined that an informal selection of proposals for the purchase of the property was result in offers most advantageous for the district. Staff is now bringing forth the top two offers for the property for board consideration and evaluation. It is recommended that the Board of Education review and consider the offers provided for the Garrison property and select the top offer, authorizing staff to negotiate the terms of the letter of intent, as well as the purchase and sale agreement to be brought back to the board at a later meeting date.
All right, thank you, Dr. Norman. So we're going to review the top two offers as collected and analyzed by the district staff and legal counsel. These offers have been identified as the offers that are most advantageous to the district. The two top offers received are as follows. The True Life Company for sixteen million one hundred dollars and the Vandale Home for sixteen million dollars. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
No, we do not, sorry.
Okay, so we have no public comment on this item. So it's my board colleagues, we can discuss these two offers.
And Dr. Begin, I just want to make clear that staff is recommending we move forward with Vandale Homes offer.
Okay.
And that was for sixteen point two.
Sixteen million.
Sixteen.
So I think it's our understanding that they intend to develop the land and and for homes. So because they're willing to take that on and take on the whole process, I would move for the approval of staff's recommendation.
So I want to make sure I have this cleared. The board, so the recommendation is the board has considered the offers provided for the Garrison property and selects the offer from Vandale Home for sixteen million, which we believe is the most advantageous for the district. Is that the motion? And my second?
That's the second as well.
All right, so are, and as part of the section, are we, are we authorizing a negotiation of a letter of intent and a purchase and sale agreement?
Yes.
That part of your motion?
Yes. Part of my second.
Yeah.
All-inclusive.
All right, so we have a first and second to authorize the negotiation of a letter of intent and a purchase and sale agreement with Vandale Home for sixteen million dollars for the Garrison property. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five oh. Right, sorry, that was kind of clunky. We're working on that one. Trying to make sure we got all the language in there that we needed. All right, moving on to our next item, and I believe we do have public comment for this one, nine F. This is our first interim financial report for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and approval of resolution number seventeen. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. We're excited tonight to present to you the first interim financial report. Next slide, please. In our financial report, we're going to be sharing with you different elements of the budget, including the M Y P. We're going to first begin with discussing some of our reminders from previous presentations talking about our local control funding formula-based revenue. It still remains insufficient, and so you'll see that as we go through the presentation. We continue to have declining enrollment, although this year turned out to be much better than we had anticipated, so that's exciting. Unfortunately, we have lower ADA, and that's because of the quarantine that's been happening as a result of COVID nineteen continuing. We're at about ninety point three percent rather than ninety-four percent. And I'll go into the difference between enrollment and ADA in a moment. We also have the escalation of employee retirement and health benefits imposed on the district as well as underfunded mandated programs. Next slide, please. When we talk about average daily attendance, that's how we're actually funded. So we have our enrollment, but when we have ADA, it's really how many, how often the students come to school. It's usually lower than enrollment due to factors such as students moving, perhaps dropping out, staying home due to illness. And so this is how we're determining funding. So when you hear funded on ADA, it's really the number of days of students' attendance divided by the number of days in the regular school year. Next slide, please. Okay, so first interim general fund comparison. So last time we talked to you, it was about the unaudited actuals, and that's in our first column. We have the revenues and the expenses. We had about two hundred and seventy-three estimated, and then we were coming in at about two seventy-four million for our expenses, which showed a net change in fund balance of one point seven. We had a beginning fund balance in July of forty-one point eight million and an ending fund of forty point one million. We estimated that the thirteen point seven million would be needed for economic uncertainties. That's our five percent. Our district chooses the five percent. It's not mandated, we are only mandated to have three percent, and this is considered part of the ending fund balance. When you switch over to first interim, that's our middle column, that's where we are now. Our revenues have increased, that's two hundred and ninety-five million. Our expenses have also increased, which is three hundred and four million. You see there, our net change in fund balance is eight point eight million. Beginning fund balance stays the same, but our ending fund balance switches to thirty-two point nine million. And again, we have our reserve for economic uncertainties. That goes up because your expenses go up. And then the last column is just your changes. It's just some simple math going across. And so that shows you the difference from our unaudited actuals. Next slide, please. Now we have our changes in revenue. So this is changes in the amount of money coming into the school district. Very excited because we had almost five million additional dollars come in because of the efforts of our community, of our sites, with letting us know what students would qualify for low income. And so we had a five point zero seven percent COLA. And then we also had an increase in our undubicated pupil percentage, also called your U P P. And so our funding per student has gone from almost eleven thousand to over eleven thousand, which equates to almost five million additional dollars. We also had additional funding from federal money, our titles one through four, and carryover and recalculated entitlements. We had our state carryover and state programs. Some examples are listed here. We also had our educator effectiveness grant, and that's what you saw earlier from Dr. Lovey, and that's been included in this total. So anytime we have these grants come in, it's fantastic. And what we try to do is roll it in as fast as we can so that the board can see and the community can see the funding that's available to our students. Then lastly, we have our local, we have carryover grants. And included in that are some examples of special education, gear up, and Aces for a total of just over twenty-two million additional dollars. Next slide, please. All right, now we have changes in expenditures. So just as we had changes in revenues, we had changes in expenditures. Those were certificated and classified salaries. We had benefits. The types of benefits we're talking about, STIRS, PERS, workers' comp, unemployment, all of that goes up when salaries go up as well. And then we had our regular books and supplies, services and operating expenses, and capital outlay and other outgo. And that was a total of just over twenty-nine million. Okay, next slide, please. All right, our components of ending fund balance. So the components of ending fund balance includes our non-spendables, our restricted, our committed, our assigned, and our reserve. So going through these, we have our first column, which is the unaudited actuals. We went through that before the last time that we presented. You'll see that the reserve for economic uncertainties remains the same from previous slides. Our non-spendables stayed the same going from on a unaudited to first interim, so we have no difference. The far right gray column is just the difference that you're seeing between the two first two columns. Our restricted had a change, we've spent about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Our committed stays the same, that's our post-retirement. We have our assigned has gone from eighteen to six point nine, and then you'll see the difference is just as almost twelve million. And then our reserve has also adjusted slightly. Okay, so now talking about our multi-year projection. So things that are really important to consider with our multi-year projection, it's a little bit different than in past years. Past years, the COLA has, has not been as high. This year, we had five point oh seven. Next year, we're anticipating two point four eight in twenty-two, twenty-three, and three point eleven in twenty-three, twenty-four. That's still considered pretty conservative when you're looking at your out years. And so your M Y P expenditures include your certificated and classified salaries and benefits, just as we reviewed a moment ago, increases to health and welfare, and your increases to your STIRS and your PERS. Okay, next slide. So now this is something that's really important to be focusing on, and it really does relate to COVID and what everyone's experiencing now. And twenty-one, twenty-two, our ADA, and remember, our ADA is what we're funded on. So it's what percentage of students are actually able to come to school every day. So typically, we run at about ninety-four percent. This year, we're at about ninety point three percent, and that's due to quarantining. Conservative estimates and out years, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to increase it by one percent. That's one ninety-one point three. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're looking at ninety-two point three. So we're still staying very conservative because it's still a bit unknown as how attendance is going to be next year. This year, the great news for twenty-one, twenty-two is only a hundred and ten students didn't return from last year. We think there could be a lot of different factors. Our hope is that it won't go down again, but we do want to stay conservative in our out years. So we're going to continue with minus four ten in twenty-two, twenty-three, and in twenty-three, twenty-four. So if more students end up remaining with us, then that will obviously decrease, which means our funding will increase. So now looking at our multi-year projection summary. We're looking at the revenues, the expenses, the change, our beginning fund balance, our ending fund balance, and then additional expenditure reductions to maintain a five percent reserve. And so this is really important for looking at how we're going to be doing in our out years. So all of this does have all of our grants, all of our COVID funding in it. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're at two ninety-five million. Our expenses are at three oh four. We shared this a little bit earlier in the presentation. So it's a net change of eight point eight. Our beginning fund balance again is forty-one point eight million, and our ending fund balance is thirty-two point nine million. So this zero represents that we don't have to make any additional changes for our budget to be balanced this year. And we do have over fifteen million for our economic reserve of five percent. Next year is also terrific. So I put that little arrow in there because we're looking at a lot of boxes with a lot of numbers, just so you can follow me a little bit. If you follow the orange arrow, you start your ending fund balance in twenty-one, twenty-two. You pop it up into your beginning fund balance, and that's important. So then we look at our revenues. We've got in twenty-two, twenty-three, about two seventeen. You'll notice that's quite a drop. It's because our ADA is going to be changing significantly, and we're anticipating for that, and we're ready for that. Our expenses are at two hundred and thirty-two million. We have a net change of fifteen million. Our beginning fund balance is at thirty-two point nine million. Our ending fund balance will be almost at eighteen. Again, we don't have to make any additional reductions, which is terrific news, and we are able to save our 5%, and that's just over 11 million. So now we get into our third out-year. That's 2324. Our revenues, it goes back up a little bit. When you see your revenues go up, it probably means your COLA is going up. And as I shared with you a few slides ago, the COLA does go from 2 point, I'm sorry, I had it right here, 2.48 to 3.11. And so that increases your revenue. And then you have your expenses just below that. Our beginning fund balance is 17.9. We took that from the previous column and popped that up in there. You notice that your ending fund balance went down a bit. And this is the year that we're seeing that we're going to have to make some reductions. We do have a little bit of time to make those, and we have a lot of great strategies that I'm going to share in the next couple of slides and how we're going to do that. And then we, and so you need 8.2 million in reductions in order to have your 5% in your economic reserves.
Doc can end it real quick.
Yeah.
Next slide. This year at 295, the next year at 217. Does that assume that we spend down all of the grant money that we have, including the COVID funds?
We won't be spending it down. What that's showing you, that big gap is mostly due to your ADA dropping. Everyone in the state has been functioning on a 1920 ADA. That's going to be going away, and now you're going to have to function on your real ADA in terms of where are you actually at that year, or you can always do the previous year, whichever is higher. And so the bulk of that money that you see is because it's a loss of our student funding. I showed you before, it, it's close to over 11,000 per student, but that's where it comes from. We'll still have our carryover of our COVID funding because that extends for several years, at least a couple more years. But we will still be rolling over whatever isn't spent. It does stay in the budget.
But that number doesn't include any of that rollover, even though, is that right? So some, so our number that we start with next year will be that plus whatever rolled over from our COVID funds?
Correct.
So I have a question. I see that 5% that reserve that we have a board policy for. So I just want to make sure the state requires 3%.
Correct. The state only requires 3%.
So if we had a 3% reserve, that 8 million on the 2023, 2024 year would not be there?
Well, it would be significantly decreased by just over 4 million. It would be significantly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions before I move on? Right. And so then we're looking lastly at our multi-year fund balances. So we had our, I'm sorry. We had our non-spendable, our restricted, our committed, our assigned, and our reserve for economic uncertainties. I think I have already covered this a little bit. Our non-spendables, you'll see from 2122 to 2223, you see that dramatic drop. That's because our SERP drops off. And so we'll no longer be spending on that, and then it stays consistent for the next year in 2223. And then we have our restricted funding that goes down a bit each year as we spend that down. But again, new grants could be coming in for that. We have our committed, which is our post-retirement. That stays consistent. We have our assigned, and remember, you can only keep the assigned if your budget is balanced and you don't have a structural deficit. If you do, you eat into your assigned funds for projects such as turf and deferred maintenance, and that's why you get a zero at 2223. And then lastly, there's that 5% again at the bottom. Okay, so now we'll go on to the fiscal stabilization plan. We share this at every meeting. We are going to continue to align staffing with our declining enrollment for fiscal solvency. That's extremely important with our declining enrollment and evaluate ongoing expenditures for possible reductions. Also with our next steps, we're going to continue to work with the San Diego County Office of Ed for guidance and support. We will adopt a first interim qualified budget report. We'll continue to incorporate updated revenue and expenditures as they become available for current multi-year projections. We will engage with FICMAT to review our budget and recommendations, so you'll hear that coming forward. And then also Keenan, who helps us with all of our insurance, will continue to work with them on our budget efficiencies. And lastly, we'll review and incorporate changes from the governor's budget in January. And that's really important this year because it's going to directly impact our MYP, depending on what types of revenues are coming towards us and what could be happening with COLA. Those two factors will have a huge impact on us as we move into P2 or our second portion. Any questions before I move on to COVID funding? All right, we'll move on to COVID funding. So I haven't changed anything with this because this is just for information. So these are, by fund, are multi-year summary of state and federal funding. We received about 59.7 in the second big wave. Incorporated into some of the expenditures is about 1.2 from our first wave of money. And then we also remember take out indirect costs, which is about $2 million. This first page is just a summary, and it just goes through our ESAR funding, and it goes through ESAR 2, ESAR 3, and then it talks about learning loss mitigation. So that stays the same. Going next, last time I shared with you AB86, and I talked to you about all the changes that happened with AB86. So what I did was just put where it's from, what it's for, and what the timelines are for. And then slide 19 is the same. And then lastly, slide 20. And so I've gone in and just made sure that you're aware of all the different funding sources, how much we've received. And then lastly, I've created a summary of expenditures. I changed the template just a little bit so it's easier to, to read and understand. But these are basically our main actions that we're taking as a district to support all of our students and staff. Our first one is mental health and counselors. I have what we've planned, and then I have our actials. And remember, actials can hit all throughout the year. And so there may even be more actials than when I ran this report last week. And so I just want to give a shout out to all of the fantastic accountants and account techs and account clerks who helped put all of this together for us. And so they run our actials and make sure that whatever's been expended in these categories we're accounting for throughout the year. You can see that down in classified and certificated personnel. We had a little bit of a bump from last time. That's because we had our raise kick in for that. And then we have started to make different expenditures. Last time I talked about expanded learning, academic and social emotional support. That had to do a lot with summer school. We're already beginning, believe it or not, it's December. We're planning for summer school already. We have our professional learning. Professional learning, we haven't been able to do a lot of yet because of our substitute shortage, but we do have plans on how we'll be able to get around that. We have curriculum instruction materials, software and supplies, transitional kindergarten. We've done a lot of great work in that area. Technology, we have a lot of things in the queue that will probably be showing up the next time we revisit this. Our facilities, our HVAC roofing shade structures, we've been talking about that. We have a lot of plans for that coming up shortly. And then our classified and certificated personnel I mentioned. And then our PPE, we are starting to dip into purchasing more PPE. So that's just a summary of some of the things that we've done. We, we will update our website so that this is on there as well. Did we have any questions about COVID funding and how we've, any expenditures?
Do we update our COVID funding spending plan annually? You know, as we're just thinking like, we just got that other grant for professional learning. Does that mean that 3.8 could be used for something else? If it's matching the same thing, like, when would we review this plan again?
Well, I'm glad that you asked that because Dr. Lovey and I talked about that, and that will be actually be on here the next time we talk because it's important that you take any new funding that comes your way and you examine, well, what have we already talked about when it comes to, for example, professional learning? And so that, and so that will be something that's discussed in cabinet and shared with you. Some require a plan, like, for example, I believe we brought ESAR 3 the last time we met with you, and those are plans, and so you can make updates to them. But we do keep, we, we meeting all of the accountants. We have a big spreadsheet with all of the funding to make sure that our actions aren't overlapping. And that we're, I, I think what you're really asking is, are we making sure we're maximizing our dollars so that we already have so many allocated safe professional development? This new grant isn't going to duplicate those efforts. And, and yes, ESS and business services is making sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. It looks like we have several public comments for this item. So board colleagues, go ahead and listen to public comments, and then we can engage in discussion before we vote.
Okay, so we have actually two people, Emily Witchman and Katie Taylor.
Welcome. Before you get started on your public comment, we're happy to receive comments about items on tonight's agenda. Each person may speak to up to three minutes. So we'll have a timer on the bottom to guide you. No, Emily, I believe you're first.
Okay, thank, thank you. I will rephrase an email I sent to board members on 9/11 because of the financial impact on the budget and the need to cut 8.3 million for the 2324 school year. I was on the board as well as Mike when we voted for social emotional learning, SEL. I was on the board. Since then, I noticed that it's morphing and all-encompassing, surveying, assessing, asking personal questions to all children in the district. Also noted is hiring a directorate coordinator to administer secretaries in the Office of Equity Diversity and Inclusion. This office for salaries and compensation alone is 464,685,000 dollars per year without any mention of helping students attain their academic goals or potential. From 2021 to 23, the district will be paying panorama education, $105,000. Epic education, $90,000, plus another $92,900 to panorama. None of the contracts express ways to improve academics by their many surveys, assessments, and data collecting for a total so far of 1.6 for three minutes. Because of the pandemic isolation of students and the negative social emotional impact on, impact of the pandemic, wearing masks, et cetera. Do we need to pay for surveys and services and personnel to tell us what our teachers, our counselors, our psychs, and our threat assessment team already know? For $92,900, is Epic Education going to tell teachers how to implement changes from their equity audit? At 22 school sites and district office, as far as academic help. Their four areas of focus are personnel equity, teacher quality equity, problematic equity, and lastly, achievement equity. The achievement equity will have facts that will be gleaned from the Department of Education and the in-house school data, like state assessments, performance dropout rates, students on college preparatory tracks, and participation and performance on ACT and SAT. Or now are the stu, are the colleges even going to get, take those tests? So what are you paying for? Not one word on how to help students meet or exceed their smarter balance assessment given to them in 2019. In, in, in further, I found that the panorama, who, who you are paying $280,000 for surveys has an invasion into OUSD's Ares and the iReady student platforms. And there is also an integration or invasion of Panorama's own social emotional learning platforms into OUSD student systems. Panorama now has access to our children, our minor children into nationwide. I urge you to watch to see if we spend money in academics. Do you have enough? We need the money for our students to be able to thrive and be successful after they graduate from our district. Any other outcome is a dereliction of your duty and responsibility.
Thank you, Emily. Our next speaker?
Katie Taylor.
Okay, good evening, school board. The only thing this school board has proven successful at is spending money they don't have. And the school board shifts positions tonight, and Stacy Beegan, I guess, is going to be our president again. Personally, based on the board's reckless spending and marching the school district towards bankruptcy, every member on the school board should resign and acknowledge their failure. So easy to spend money and not so easy to turn down the teachers' union's demands for excessive raises, even when clearly the district cannot afford the expenditures. Not sure how someone can be on the school board, vote in line with the teachers' unions when they have a direct conflict of interest with their own ties to the teachers' unions. Maybe Eric Joyce and Stacy Beegan would like to speak to that. But right now, it seems Eric Joyce has other ambitions besides the school board and is running for Oceanside City Council District 1. I guess placing a school district near bankruptcy is not good enough. He's ready to be a big spending liberal in the Oceanside City Council. So let all be warned. Eric has no trouble spending money, even if it leads to red ink and bankruptcy. The good news, it will be equitable bankruptcy with an overlay of sensitivity from social emotional learning. And I believe Todd Madison signed up to speak on this topic as well and has not been acknowledged. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
We do not.
Okay. We are moving, okay. So do we have any questions for staff or discussion items? Before we take a vote?
I, I did. I had some questions about ADA. So I just wanted to get an overview of our quarantine process because that was mentioned as the reason our ADA is down. And I know that it, it has been a struggle, but I just want to get a general overview of like, if a student has sickness symptoms, what's their process to get back to school?
Thank you, trustee Joyce. I'm going to have Dr. Sparks answer this. He oversees this process for us.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. Good evening. And the quarantine process for students, it really impacts students in two different ways. One is if a student is symptomatic or has symptoms that are consistent with COVID-19, they must be excluded from school and are able to re-enter school within 24 to 48 hours if their symptoms improve and they have a negative COVID test. If a student is actually test positive for COVID, the CDPH, CDC, and along with our county office of ed, requires that the student, and this applies to SEPT as well, but requires that the student isolates for 10 days at a minimum. And then the third is when a student is in close contact to someone who is positive for COVID-19. And they, that we have exercised some modified quarantine options in OUSD and have continued to adopt new quarantine, modified quarantine options that the CDC and CDPH has allowed us to exercise. And the one that we typically use in any case now where a, where a student is in close contact and has to quarantine is that they would be excluded from school and be able to test on days five, six, or seven after being a, a close contact to someone who is positive. And if they test negative on five, six, or seven, they're able to re-enter school on day eight. That timeline initially, a year ago, was a 14-day quarantine. We then reduced it back to a 10-day quarantine, and now we have the most lenient version of it, which is an eight-day quarantine, but we're, or a seven-day quarantine where students can return on day eight. And we're continuing to look and explore options to exercise modified quarantines and cut down on the number of students who are out of school on a daily basis.
So if we have a positive case in a classroom, what happens to that class?
It's a good question. So in, in a class where there's a positive case, the school site team consisting of school admin, the school health office, which includes a health tech and also the nurse, they do an investigation and identify anybody who is a close contact. And a close contact is someone who is within six feet or less of someone for 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. So think of a class where, in the elementary, where you're in there with this, with someone the entire day. If you are within six feet of them or less throughout the day, then you are identified as a close contact. If you are at the secondary level and switching classes, the investigation goes a little bit deeper. But every single time, the close contact status applies where we ask our team at our sites to identify only those individuals who were six feet or less for 15 minutes or more. If that applies to that person, we would then determine if they are vaccinated. If they are fully vaccinated, they do not need to quarantine as long as they are symptomatic. The best way to avoid having to quarantine if you are a close contact to someone is to be fully vaccinated, which we encourage our students who are eligible and are South Africa eligible to do. And we also determine whether or not someone is symptomatic. If they're symptomatic, the symptom decision tree does apply to them. But anytime there's a close contact, we do require that person to quarantine for at least a seven-day period and test negative to return back to class.
So like a third grade class where they're not, where, well, an elementary class where kids are not, lots of kids are not vaccinated. If they're not sitting within the six feet, then they're not going to be considered a close If they're not sitting within the six feet, then they're not going to be considered a close contact and they can come back to school the next day.
That's correct. They have to also be symptoms free. And in the elementary scenario, we do address these on a case by case basis because. There are elementary classrooms where there's a lot more movement around students that are, that's going on. And so. It's not as easy sometimes to determine if someone was six feet away or six feet or more away from someone throughout the day. But then there are also periods where teachers can use a seating chart, which we have encouraged everyone to use this year, K through twelve. And by using the seating chart, if you can determine that someone was further away than the six foot. Close contact definition, then we do not, we try our best not to quarantine students who are out of that six foot radius.
Okay. Do we do any modified quarantines where we keep a classroom separated? From the other classes throughout their day is like a. What I'm trying to ask, I'm asking questions because I want to try and make sure that one, we reduce our impact on ADA by any means necessary. And two, we keep kids in school because the two things, right? It's the funding and then also the, any class a kid misses is detrimental to their education. So. It sounds like a lot of our.
Point of order, this item isn't related to changing our policy for having kids serve quarantine or not. We're talking, I understand you're trying to get to that goal. We all have that same goal. We want all the kids in the school, but it's not relevant to this discussion on the, on the interim report. Except to say we want kids to be in school. So our funding is more robust. We can't give direction at this item to do that, honey. I'm sorry.
Not giving in direction. I'm asking questions about our policies. I'll be very brief. I'll wrap it up. Board members. A lot of these policies require access to testing. So I just would like. If we could get an update on how we can improve access to testing so that kids can get back into school if they're considered a close contact. That's not a direction. That's a question ongoing, whether it comes in a Friday letter or not.
Yes, we'll be happy to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks, for jumping in and sharing that decision tree with us. And I wanted to, I have some concerns about the five percent reserve and the board policy that we have. Hearing what Dr. Norman said about. If we didn't have the five percent and we had a three percent reserve. Anyways, our numbers would be different on that third year out and we would have to make less reductions. So I would like for. Anyway, staff to bring back at our next board meeting in January, what it would look like to. Explore that board policy and possibly consider changing it back to the three percent. The overall goal is to be positive by our second interim and get out of this qualified status.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Yeah. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the first interim financial report and the approval of resolution number seventeen. Do I have a second?
I second that.
First and a second. Any more questions, board members? Right, team, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item nine F. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries five oh. Thank you, Dr. Norman. All right, move, we're going to take a, I've been asked by my board colleagues, we're going to take a ten minute break. It is eight nineteen right now, so we will come back at eight twenty-nine. So we're going to take a ten minute break, everyone. So don't go anywhere. Mr. Moon, will you put a timer up? All right. Our break is up in fifteen seconds, so I'm hoping my board colleagues jump back on.
Back at you.
All right. Thank you for jumping back on. And we had a little snafu in our virtual world with promoting. Of a speaker. So we're going to go ahead, even though we've called for the vote to let that public comment come through. So I believe it's Todd Madison did not get an opportunity to speak. With item nine F, so.
Mr. Moon, do you want to go ahead and explain what happened so Mr. Madison knows how to be able to speak since we're having these technical difficulties?
Sure. So what happened is I tried to promote this Madison a couple of times and I got a message back that said. The Todd Madison declined to be promoted. So something going on in the Zoom world with the. With that particular account. So what I'm going to do is. I'm going to try the promotion. If I get the same message and I'm just going to click the button that says allow to speak. So our board operator won't start the clock till Mr. Madison is actually speaking. So Todd, if you would just hang for just a minute. I press a couple of buttons, see what happens here. Okay, it looks like a promotion worked this time. So. Todd, go ahead.
You're on, Todd.
Mr. Madison, you need to unmute your account and go ahead and begin speaking when you're ready.
Thanks. Thank you very much. So thank you very much for the accommodation. Sorry for the Zoom snafu. I don't know what happened there. I didn't see anything on my end until this time. So who knows? The mysteries of the internet, but appreciate it. So anyway, so what I would have said and will say. The found money of twenty-two million is great news for Oceanside Unified. It's very lucky timing. We've been on the edge of a fiscal cliff for years. Always just kind of two steps from going over. And now we're still qualified as we have been for years as well. As we've seen, the first thing our district does when an extra bit of money comes in, even when it doesn't, is give itself that money. In this case, that was done before we even knew it was happening. Not only does that have immediate financial consequences, but the gift, it's the gift that keeps on giving, increasing both pay and pension costs now and forever. We've seen the impact in that in tonight's presentation, despite the largest increase in expense being the reason in, in the budget difficulties. At the beginning of the presentation, mentioned nothing about the district giving itself nine and a half million dollars just two months ago. We saw it several times later, mentioned, but given it's the single largest increase in expense, I would think it merits a front page mention. And now even with the huge boost in revenue, we see nothing but red ink going forward with the board about, well, about to discuss, has discussed. Approval of eight point two million dollars in cuts from the future budget to address that. I'm in a past board meeting, one of our trustees indicated they thought we would balance that by finding efficiencies in the budget. Which sounds good. We're just going to make sure everybody turns the lights off when they're not in the room, gas up the vehicles at a cheaper station, maybe shop around a bit for copy paper, something like that. In reality, the budgeted revenue of two hundred and twenty-three million that year, likely two hundred and five million in pay and benefits. Leaves a grand total of about eighteen million for everything else the district does to educate our kids. Anyone who thinks they're going to cut eight million from a total discretionary budget of eighteen million is not facing reality. Or are we going to cut back on our reserves as we just heard, as if there's no chance of economic difficulties ahead? The only way we're going to get to eight million dollars in cuts is to cut things that affect the education of our kids. Note again, as I said earlier, a couple of months ago, the board approved bonus raises for all in our district that added nine point five million dollars to that deficit. If that had not been done, we'd be looking at no cuts at all right now, would we? Once again, taking candy from babies to benefit themselves. We'll see, maybe we'll get lucky, but of course, depending on luck is not a strategy. We need to give parents true power to influence decisions like this. School choice is the answer. Join us in the fight. Thanks.
All right, moving right along to item ten, our policy development. We have quite a few policies. So we'll start with ten A, approval of the continuation of electronic virtual board meetings through the month of January twenty twenty-two.
Yes, Stacy, this item just authorizes the board through AB three sixty-one to continue virtual meetings using Zoom as we do. And the board has the authority to do this through January twenty twenty-four. You just need to make the decision every thirty days. So whatever decision. The board makes today will impact the meeting in January, which will be January eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to continue our virtual meeting.
I will second that motion.
I'm going to vote no tonight because at the last meeting I had recorded my opinion on the matter that was, we shouldn't. In my opinion, I think we should be having in-person. Meetings using our masking, using the such distancing guidelines that we have. So I will be voting no tonight.
I support it. I think we need to keep doing it for the next couple of months, at least if not longer. The omnivarent, whatever is coming around, people are getting sick. I don't want to get into a confrontation with some of our. Folks in the world out there who have every right to try and come into our meeting without a mask and cause a ruckus so we can get on.
get into a confrontation with some of our folks in the world out there who have every right to try and come into our meeting without a mask and cause a ruckus so we can get on TV. So I'm going to stick with it for the time being and support it.
All right.
Now, I'm going to support it because it's still too much for me to carry everything still around. It's still a lot of portable stuff and just even for meetings that I go to at other times I've had to put the burden on others. So it's not fair to anybody else to have to do that. So I wish at this point, we just continue at this point, this one.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of continuing our virtual meeting in January 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, so motion carries for one. Moving on to item 10B, we do have public comments for this item. But let staff do their presentation on the approval of replacement of board policy 1325 on advertising and promotion.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy is being updated to reflect new law AB 841, which prohibits advertising of foods or beverages during the school day, including participation in a corporate incentive program that rewards students with free or discounted foods or beverages, unless the food or beverage complies with nutritional standards. The update also clarifies court decisions regarding advertisements containing religious viewpoints. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed replacement to board policy 1325 advertising and promotion.
Thank you. We have a public comment?
Yes, we do, from Graham Fraser.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Graham.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. Been a long evening here. I'm getting a bit sleepy, but some of the discussions was interesting. My name is Graham Fraser. As you know, I'm 40-year resident of this fair city. Upon reading the proposed board policy 1325 advertising and promotion that you plan to adopt this evening, I saw that it was deficient and inconsistent with unit 13 of the ethnic studies curriculum that requires students to prepare a poster to be hung on campus and distributed within the school. That's a direct quote from the from the curriculum. To make it consistent, you must modify the policy to exempt communist propaganda. The required poster is about the prison industrial complex. A book written by Angela Davis, a self-described communist. And this is direct code again, so all students learn how prisons and capitalism work together to put people of color in prison. This is pure CRT. Despite protests from several board members that CRT is not being taught, this is an example of your woke craft. I use that term specifically because it's the way that CRT is introduced without, I see it very similar as witchcraft. That has destroyed all trust in the leadership of the district, who we mistakenly assumed would protect our children from anti-American propaganda such as this, not actually promoted. I'm aware that you are under the spell of the Communist Teachers Union. And hence, I can understand but cannot forgive your leisitude in standing up for the kids and society. You will all be defeated. Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve item 10B.
I'll second it.
Have a first and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, I call all in favor of approving item 10B, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5O. Moving on to item 10C, approval of replacement of board policy 3290 gifts, grants, and bequests.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy is being updated to add a new section on online fundraising, addressing considerations for approving a crowdfunding internet platform to raise funds for district school or classroom projects or equipment. The update also adds a prohibition against accepting any gift, grant, or bequest that promotes the use of non-nutritious foods or beverages and provides that any advertising used by a corporate sponsor meet the standards specified in BP 1325. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed replacement to board policy 3290 gifts, grants, and bequests.
I have a, it's kind of redundant, but how is the state or whoever defining non-nutritional food, the majority of our food is processed?
I would need to look up the exact qualifications in terms of what makes it nutritious or non-nutritious. I could talk to Frank McGinnis. He's our Director of Nutrition. He could get that information for us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve item 10C.
I'll second it.
First and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 10C, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5O. Moving on to item 10D, approval of replacement of board policy 3530 risk management insurance.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy is being updated to address the basis upon which insurance decisions should be made and the provision of safety-related training and protective equipment for staff. The update also deletes material regarding the removal of an insurance agent as being implicit in a governing board's authority and explicit in insurance contracts. Lastly, the timeline for reporting to the board on risk management activities is revised from twice a year to periodically to give board flexibility based on district need. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed replacement to board policy 3530 risk management and insurance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 10D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5O. Moving right along to item 10E, approval of revisions of board policy 5113 absences and excuses.
Yes, good evening, board. This board agenda item for update of board policy 5113 absences and excuses allows for students to be excused for attending their own naturalization ceremony as an excused absent. For them to be allowed to be excused for religious exercises or instruction and that their grades would not be lowered in the event of an excused absent that missed schoolwork, as long as missed schoolwork was made up in a timely manner. So this supports more options for our families to have excused absences.
Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it, but I was under the impression that that was already being done. I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any questions or comments for Dr. Lovey? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 10E, say aye.
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 Motion carries 5O. Moving on to our last policy development item, 10F, approval of revisions of board policy 5148.2 before and after school program.
Thank you, Dr. Begin, and good evening again, board. This recommendation is for revisions that will comply with Assembly Bill 2615. And it just specifies some additional language into the before-after-school programming for policy, which specifies ongoing training for our partners that provide the before-after-school programming to our students. It also specifies that there will be no charge for students who are transitional or homeless or foster. It also specifies that there will be reduced charges or reduced costs for anyone who qualifies as low income and that priority enrollment will be given to transitional foster and homeless youth. And we recommended the board approve the revisions to board policy 5148.2.
Thank you, Dr. Sparks. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a first and a second. Any questions for Dr. Sparks?
Dr. Sparks, do you know how many students are unable to get into our programs, the before-and-after-school program because of space or not availability? Is that a common? Well, I can, I can provide you with a waitlist number if that's what you're asking for, students who are currently on the waitlist. Yeah, I can get that to you for sure. I don't know that they're off the top of my head. Okay, thank you.
But those who are on the waitlist, we know that they're not any of these transitional or homeless or anything, right? We know that they're at least being served at this point right now, even.
That's, that's correct. Our, our approach has always been to prioritize students who are foster homeless transitional and also to provide a sliding scale along with our partners for anyone who identifies as low income. And so that's always been our, our approach. And now this board policy actually specifies that and completes that approach here in Oceanside.
Okay, so now the training that we're looking to give is that training that we're giving?
We, both, we, we provide training for our partners and we also use some of our ACE's grant funding to provide some training to some of the outside contractors. It's usually a mix between bringing folks in to train, but also doing some of the training ourselves for our program providers.
Perfect, thank you.
Are some of the families that are on the waitlist considered low income? Most likely not, but I would have to get back to you and let you know for sure. Okay, because that.
It's a priority, right?
Yeah, future development of the, well, it's, it wasn't listed as the high priority for entry.
Oh, okay. You're right, it was, I thought that was, but no, it wasn't.
As future development, it'd be pretty amazing if we could guarantee access. I know that that's a personnel issue too, but anyway, I'm glad we're updating this faulty too. Thanks.
All right, all right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 10F, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5O. Our next item is a public hearing that I'm opening the public hearing at 8:47 PM. This public hearing is on the adjusted trustee area plan following the release of the 2020 census data. We will be getting, having a presentation from attorney Jonathan Salt and demographer Susan Miller. After the presentation, we'll take any public comments that we have. So I'll turn it over to you.
So Jonathan Salt's not able to be with us this evening, but we have Brandon Lalande, who, Lalon, thank you, Brandon. From F3, Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost, who've been advising us as we've been working with cooperative strategies. So Brandon will walk us through the presentation and explain the maps. We have three to consider. The board will not be voting tonight. We will be voting in January. We've had this information on our website since December 3rd with the ability for people to provide feedback and we've received zero comments for feedback at this time. So with that, Brandon, I push this on to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I did have one question regarding the, who is operating the slides? I see that it's already on the screen, so I'll just be giving an indication of next slide for whoever is managing that.
That will work out perfectly. Thank you. And Susan, welcome into the meeting as well. And thank you for being here. And I know we'll be hearing from you as well. And thank you for the good work you've done.
All right, well then with that, I think we'll get started. As the Superintendent just let everyone know, I'm not Jonathan Salt, but I'm Brandon Lalon from Fagan, Friedman, and Full Frost. And today we're going to be talking about the 2020 census and its impact on the district's trustee voting areas. Next slide, please. Before we get into any of the adjustments and map-related data, I think it's important first to talk about what the CVRA is. The California Voting Rights Act took effect in January of 2003 and it prohibits the use of an at-large election system when such, when such a system either impairs the ability of a protected class to either elect candidates of their choice or their ability, their ability to influence the outcome of an election. Next slide, please. The bi-trusty area election system, in contrast, is the only safe harbor to a CVRA claim. The, the bar for CVRA claims is very low and the bi-trusty area election system protects the district from any CVRA claims that would have come about under the at-large election system. Under the bi-trusty area election system, the school is divided into separate trustee areas and a governing board member is then elected from each one of those trustee areas only by the registered voters that live in the trustee area where the governing board member both resides and is representing.
I have a question. How does that differentiate from gerrymandering?
Sure, um. Gerrymandering is a specific legal concept that describes the process by which the borders are created in such a way that disenfranchises or discriminates against a protected class. With the bi-trusty area election system, the way that we would develop the maps, and this is going to be a little bit later in the slide, we look at specifically approved criteria. Again, that's going to be listed later, that includes complying with the US Constitution and the Federal Voting Rights Act, as well as other California laws, including the Education Code, that would prevent and forbid the district and the demographer from creating any maps that would be considered gerrymandered or discriminatory against any protected class. I believe you're muted.
Eleanor, you're muted, Eleanor.
I'm sorry. Basically, what I, what you're saying is that California Voting Rights Act supersedes the Constitution of the United States.
No, that, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the California Voting Rights Act requires that the demographer and the, and the board to only look at maps and adjustments that complies with the US Constitution and the Federal Voting Rights Act. So those are additional criteria that go into the calculus. If anything violated the US Constitution or the Federal Voting Rights Act, then that would not be permissible under the CVRA. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Next slide, thank you. I think we were just looking forward to this. The map creation considerations and criteria on the federal side, there must be equal population between and among the trustee areas. There, the requirement and language in the law is that the population be as equal as practicable. And while a 0% variance is what we would shoot for, the law has come about in such a way with different interpretations from the Supreme Court that have listed a 10% permissible variance between the largest trustee area and the smallest trustee area. So as long as those are within the 10% permissible variance, then that will comply with equal population. Next would be the minority voting rights consideration. And this just means that there can be no discriminatory purpose and no minority vote dilution. Equal protection means that there must not, that race must not be the predominant factor in drawing and adopting the maps. Looking at specific CVRA state requirements, we have to also take into consideration topography, geography, cohesiveness, continuity, integrity, compactness of the territory, and protecting local communities of interest. Next slide, please. On the screen now is the district's current trustee area. And if we look at trustee area number, number one, that is located in the central of the district, trust, and that's highlighted in yellow, trustee area two occupies the middle south of the district and that is highlighted in green, trustee area three occupies most of the northern and looks like western side of the district. Trustee area four is the blue strip that goes along North River Road. And trustee area five would be just to the south of that and to the east of trustee areas one and two. Next slide, please. So now we're getting to the impact of the census and the purpose of tonight's board meeting. Once a transition is made to a bi-trusty area election system, following each dicennial census, the governing board must approve adjustments to its existing map to ensure that the population, the population balance that we just discussed is achieved. And this process must be completed by March 1st, 2022. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Miller because she's better with the numbers and maps than I am. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Brandon. As you all have seen these numbers before, when we came before you last month, this is the concept of how do we start to think about balancing the trustee areas? And what we take in consideration is the new population of the census, the 2020. We have five trustee areas. So what we want to try to do is balance out those trustee areas. So you take the census population divided by five and the ideal trustee size is about 27,300 plus. And we know that the total variance between the trustee areas with the most population and the less population is a 21%, 21.9%. And so what we're trying to do in the process, which was what we described to you guys last month, is how do we bring it back into? last month is how do we bring it back into alignment? Um, so if our if our threshold is ten percent, you know, that's where the the mark is, the watermark, shall we say. We need to be at ten percent or lower. So we need to bring that twenty-one point nine percent below that threshold of um, ten percent. So what we provided to you all um, uh, about a month or so ago, if we can go to the next slide, please. Um, as we said, we're no longer in balance, so we need to start thinking about how do we rebalance ourselves? Um, and how do we start to think about giving ourselves some breathing room in terms of the rebalancing of our trustee areas? So what we would like you all to do is we sent over to you. Um, I think it was about uh, two weeks ago, um, a variety of scenarios, three scenarios specifically. Um, and we also sent over to you guys this afternoon. So for ease of um, you looking at this and how it impacts on a more granular level, a Google map um, app that allows you to kind of zoom in on these maps. Um, let's talk about scenario number one, please. This one is going to be looking at um, taking it into consideration that we're balancing the population. Um, and we're following along the road, the roads. Um, as you recall, we want to be looking at a couple of things in terms of do we honor um, physical boundaries? Are we honoring man-made boundaries? Are we honoring how best to um, uh, take into consider geographical, shall we say, um, guardrails? So um, this one takes in consideration the bouncing of the population of growth and following roads. Um, if we go to the next slide, I think that might be helpful. You'll notice that the red arrows show excuse me, um, the proposed change to the trustee areas. And the black arrows show the changes due to the merged census blocks. So we're putting uh, blocks together. So what happens in this case, um, is that in scenario one, we can go to the next slide, please. We bring the variance down to two point seven percent. You can see across the board, the population served across all trustee areas is about twenty seven thousand plus. Um, so we're in that range um, of well below um, uh, ten percent. Um, we're sitting at about two point seven percent level. Let's go to concept number two, please. Scenario number two. Um, in this case, you can see how the boundaries are readjusted again, how two moves down a little bit into trustee, or I'm sorry, trustee area number three moves a tad down into trustee area number one. Um, if we go to next slide, we can see exactly what's happening. Scenario two is drawn in consideration of pounds, once again, balancing the population of growth um, and following roads. Those that's the geographical benchmark, so we say. Um, the red arrow shows you the change in the trustee area. And the black is going to show you once again, um, changes due to merged census blocks. And if you guys have any questions on that, you can see that the yellow moves um, moves over a bit into um, trustee area number um, uh, five, the purple area. And in this case, I'm sorry.
It did that in both one and two.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And in this case, the total variance is about eight point seven percent. Moving on to uh, trust, uh, the scenario number three. Once again, we can see how the boundaries are readjusted. The next page will tell you exactly how we once again consider the population growth, trying our best to kind of keep our minds on how we're following um, geographic boundaries, which are really basically the roads are set in place. You'll see the red arrows are showing um, the proposed changes. We see the yellow moving over a little bit into the green area. And once again, green moving into the um, into area number five. And in this case, if the district um, does not show on the map, it does not show the um, change to proposed bound areas. Sorry. Um, it does. The district's not shown on this map. I think that's the case for all of those. I just want to make sure that you guys we're focusing really in on the spaces that we're looking at specifically. So in in line, uh, slide number sixteen, this one takes us down to a variance of the two point five percent. So what we tried to do is on slide seventeen and eighteen, we want to be sure that you guys can kind of see the different scenarios across the board, one, two, and three. So that you'll have a comparison of what we're looking at and how it kind of flows um, with the different trustee areas.
So with that, we'll open it up to any uh, comments or questions. And we appreciate the maps and uh, this is all on our website and uh, also the the ability to um, to zoom in and see the streets in more detail is on our website as well. So thank you for that uh, that attachment. So any questions or comments from the board? We're not voting tonight. I will vote in January. Um, this is just for discussion.
I'll leave that map back up if we're gonna, if anybody's got anything to say, but. Thank you. Um, I like three in my in in my look at that scenario. I'm I'm interested to see if we get any public input over the next month. Um, I don't know if we don't go out and shake up the trees. I don't think we really will that much. Um, but the difference between one and two and then three scenario is uh, significant in in my respects and in District One. And the fundamental thing there is it's really Eric, if we have Oceana, we go into District One. Makes no sense to me geologically or geographically or community of interests um, and other levels. Not that I say that I affiliate with Oceana, but I live next door to it, but um, um, that balance to me makes the most sense as it's shown in in scenario three and the numbers really kind of are almost elegant the way they uh, move up without having to alter virtually a little bit of Eleanor's district, a little bit of um, your district and Stacy's and leaves um, Raquel's District Four as is. All of them basically leave Raquel's District as is, but at any rate, that's my thought on it. Uh, I'm sure there's more folks out there that can, you can move those areas around on the edges and have a whole merry-go-round kind of domino effect, um, playing with these things if you get down into it, but um, that one looks pretty elegant to me. It's my two cents.
Yeah, the idea is trying to not, I think, as um, was mentioned earlier by Director Evans, trying not to um, make them odd. Um, but rather but rather be respectful of um, what has been done in the past and trying not to um, you know, tweak it as we can to to meet the needs that you all have um, without making it disruptive. So that's that's the goal and objective. So thank you for that, Director Blessing.
Yeah, yeah, the Oceanside Boulevard boundary is very straightforward there and the and the El Camino one clearly is a is a they're both significant um, boundary barriers, if you will, and 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 points of interest throughout the community and define many, many things. So anyway, I'll shut up now.
I I don't know. Um, so I was just gonna say, um, scenario number two, just on first glance, doesn't make a lot of sense to me uh, compared to the other two. Because the variance is significantly higher. It looks, uh, the districts get longer, which means the people that are sort that are in one side of that district, the other side are further apart geographically. So the longer districts don't make uh, as much sense to me, just but that also is also shared for scenario three where District Two gets really long as well. And there's also can i- is there a reason that the that those districts kind of swapped those areas in just in scenario three? Uh, that district. Sorry, it's.
Five and three. Yeah, I would I would tell you the logic of it to me, and I'm not the demographer. They can tell you. But if you did a line down Oceanside Boulevard as your geography, that's El Corazon there, that little purple area now in District and Summit in scenario three, which is vacant, no population. So it's not counting anything. And then that lower area is like McAuliffe and the College Streets, if you know that area over there, just north of Mirco's to college.
Are you talking about five and two? It's the swap that they do in that scenario?
Yes, yes, that swap. And it doesn't make Eleanor's district anymore long per se. It's already long at the southern edge there, you know, below the new area, right? So to me, I don't know. I it 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 makes sense, but we'll see if it stands the test of of input over the next month or so.
And Director Joyce, you may, um, there was a link, I think, that was posted that does have kind of a a Google um, map overlay where you can zoom in a little bit more closely to see really exactly what the streets are um, that you touch against, so to speak. Um, and what those uh, boundaries are looking like in terms of neighborhoods at a more granular level that might help um, you as well as others in the community take a little bit closer look.
And that middle street there, Eric, that middle street there, Eric, is represented by the um, oh, I'm sorry, on El Corazon, just at that upper edge in that purple, that's Mesa. So Mesa is right there and Oceana is just north of Mesa and then south of it is to Oceanside Boulevard is El Corazon in the big in the big picture.
Are you speaking to the new the new boundary between trustee area one and trustee area five in the scenario three?
Not between two and five. I'm still talking.
Oh.
Same same spot and it's still purple. The new purple is just below Oceana, but that's Mesa Drive there.
Right.
Just that little that little I highlight of a street there for a bit there in dark purple for the line of my district, right? That's Mesa for your knowledge. And then you have both sides of Mesa, which you've already had in that going west, you know, if you will, which makes total sense and did make sense to me, but last time around too. So I I agree with you on that option too. That makes no sense to take that area north of Mesa out of your district and put it in Stacy's to Mission Avenue. That doesn't make any sense.
And and in my opinion, it also um, does vote dilution too.
Yes, I I, yeah, I I think I think Oceana going to District One is super vote dilution. I don't know if we could get sued on that. Seriously, I I, you look at the demographics of Oceana, it's about, you know, well, you know.
Right.
Whatever.
Yep. So I I look forward to getting more in the in the detail and then um, asking around the community to see if there's any feedback about specific communities that are moved in or out of districts. And if they share, but I I appreciate all the work and the maps are fascinating democracy at work. I appreciate the time you put on this.
Absolutely. And if you have any comments or questions, I'm sure um, they can be passed on back to us. And we can try to get the answers um, in advance for your meeting um, in January. So whatever works for you and your um, your team superintendent, we're happy to take care of.
Thank you, Susan. We really appreciate that. And Jonathan, I see that you were able to jump on the call. My guess is that you are jumping from meeting to meeting across the state. Is there are there?
Oh, this is my my fourth board meeting related to CBRA tonight. Um, but I'm glad Brandon was able to jump on. Sounds like Susan did a great job. I'll just very briefly say that, you know, unlike the initial transition, this is not a redraw from scratch. This is just adjusting to get back into balance. There's a lot of ways to do that. Um, and Susan provided three good scenarios and actually just looking at the Latino citizen voting age population on each. Um, area four on each one is over forty percent, which is pretty good. It ends up being a uh, plurality in each of the area fours. And then in area one, the Latino C V A P is, you know, between thirty-six and thirty-eight percent, which is above the district average. So all of the maps sort of accomplish the goals. It's just a matter of kind of feel for the community. And I think it's great that you're gonna have three meetings on this because a public hearing was never required on this. It's so much um, more streamlined than the initial transition. So having three meetings over three months is a great way to try to get as much input as possible before making these adjustments.
And this would be meeting two and January's meeting three, just to reference Jonathan. We had a had this on the meeting prior as well. So Stacy, that ends our uh, part of it. If there are any more questions or comments.
Have any public comments out there for this public hearing?
We do not.
Not on this item. We do not.
All right. Well, then I will end our public hearing at nine oh nine PM. And we look forward to bringing that back in January and seeing what we got. Cool. Thank you for your time and effort.
Thanks so very much. Have a great evening. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
All right. So we're coming up on the end of our meeting. Item twelve, we have public comments on non-agenda items, and it looks like we have a few of them, so.
Yes, we do. We have five.
Okay.
Todd Todd Madison, Patty K, Emily Witchman, Rose Higuerera, and Patrick Higueria.
All right. As he's promoting you, just a friendly reminder, we're happy to receive comments, but you need to limit them to three minutes.
Todd Madison, you're up first.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Glad the tech worked this time. Appreciate that. So during the COVID crisis, we've seen our board members rarely take positions that benefit parents and kids, especially when one goes against their special interests and what they want, particularly the districts and the unions. Last spring, we saw the board insist most parent parents wanted schools closed, despite the fact that the only polling ever done showed the opposite. Our schools were kept closed long after other districts were opening. The damage to our kids was extreme in both academic performance and mental health. Despite what the LA Teachers Union president says, learning loss is a real thing. DNF rates skyrocketed, national test scores dropped for the first time in history, and it's been difficult for teachers to get back with kids into the learning groove again. The board has done nothing to oppose masking requirements despite rallies speaker after speaker at their meetings showing parents want them to take a stand. We've also seen the board ignore the county office financial warnings because they wanted to approve a huge set of bonus raises for district employees. Raises that added almost ten million dollars to the already red ink uh, to give employees with nice six-figure compensation even more. We saw a little bit about that earlier today. Of course, we've now approved eight million in cuts from our kids unanimously. Next year is an election year. It's time for parents to step up and take control of our board to make it work for our kids, not for special interests. Districts one, three, and four are up for election. The maps are being revised, as we just saw, but in general, District One is the seventy-six corridor from a bit west of five to Douglas. Three is all of North Oceanside along Pendleton, and four is east of Douglas and north of seventy-six. If you hear me now, you care about the education of our kids. If you live in any of those areas, you owe it to those kids to step up and run. I'm a co-director of the Oceanside Parent Association, and the Parent Association is planning on doing what it can to support kids-first candidates in the next election. If you'd like to discuss what running for board is all about, email us. The email address is oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. That's oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. And lastly, we all know that school choice is the real solution. Real power comes when parents can simply choose a different school if they're bored, their district, or their union are putting themselves first and not their kids. We need signatures on that petition to get it on the ballot. We're doing great so far, but we've got a big job ahead of us. Join us to help with that by going to californiaschoolchoice.org and signing up to help and getting out there and getting signatures for the effort. That's californiaschoolchoice.org. Let's take back our education system and make it work for our kids, not for special interests for a change. Thank you very much.
Eddie K.
Okay, there. Uh, can you hear me, Anne?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Okay. So it seems like in in listening to the uh, budget uh, that's upcoming that you reviewed, that the board is highly dependent on um, homeless children, um, COVID relief and um, take into big consideration um, ADA, which of course is always a consideration, but with declining enrollment even more so. I wonder if you've kind of built in uh, the possibility of school choice, which would certainly mean that you would lose additional uh, students in eight uh, ADA. That's one consideration you might consider. Also, since um, only one out of the five board members uh, you know, offered to meet one-on-one with uh, some of us. Uh, I I think I'm pretty much uh, speaking to the parents tonight instead of the board, since they don't seem to want to listen. So parents, uh, this board has okayed uh, New York field trip for El Camino students, but has closed the board meetings to in-person adults. This board has okayed the Oceanside High School field trip to DC, yet has closed the board meetings to adults. This board has okayed the Ocean Side High School field trip to DC, yet has closed the board meetings to adults. This board has sent children back to the classrooms and yet has closed board meetings to adults. Does that make any sense? Does that follow the science at all? So I also want to suggest that how will you manage a city budget, Eric, if, if running for council, if, if the budget of the school board that you oversee is in such deficit? The parents, the school board has sold off school property, valuable property that, that the city could have used and maybe jointly. They have allowed $400,000 for community schools, which at one time the parents willingly volunteered. It wasn't a state or federal grant. They continually give time and money.
Not sure what happened to Pat. Pat, you still have 24 seconds.
Yeah, in their educational program. But we are highly leaning towards that and we will lose the race with China. Eleanor, transgender days, that is as known, a minority thing. And for the school to give great time to that, doesn't make sense. In Palm Springs, when the CTA had their meeting, they sought leaders to recruit.
All right, your time is up, Pat. All right, time is up. And our next public comment?
We serve all of our students and make sure that our students who of all populations have a safe place in Ocean Side Unified, just to be clear.
And in addition, it was on my own time, my own dime. And they were recognizing elected officials all over the county.
Next speaker is Emily Witchman.
Emily, you're up. You'll need to unmute.
Why is this so hard?
All right, let's go to the next speaker, Rosie Higuerera.
Wait, oh, oh, wait, 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 wait. I was talking. Can I, can I start again?
Sure. Go ahead, Rosie.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'd like to thank Dr. Lawrence for meeting with me and forming a new ethnic studies committee. Also, Doctor Sparks for answering questions about his equity and cultural proficiency in OUSD in his presentation. Empathy and sympathy meanings are changing according to Doctor Sparks. I find it disturbing our children are taught to understand empathy as having to feel one's pains and needs. Everyone's, I know it's not healthy psychologically or emotionally to put that burden on our children. Is sympathy not enough to be sorry or sorrowful? Are we disrespecting those who truly suffered deeply by life's challenges, grief, and outcomes? We, me, are offended by thinking others who have not experienced what we have can feel our pain and grief. Those who sympathize with us can do so with by their deep sorrow. Empathy is better served and felt by those who have had similar experiences. I have asked for information from, from the Equity and Cultural Proficiency Presentation. This information was available to school board members. The response I got from the district was to file a writing in writing, a request for records pursuant to the California Public Acts. Assisted by the California Equal Rights Foundation, I did request it and got a bunch of legalese, which most of it did not pertain to my request. I am to wait until December 24th for the material I requested. I should have had the information way before Christmas break. We're leaving staff from doing it over vacation time. It is a sad day for many of us to see our school district hide behind the legalese statutes that many school district are referring to, instead of being transparent, open, equitable, and inclusionary, as you have proudly proclaimed and as the Honorable Superintendent of the School Board to have served before you. Thank you.
Our next speaker. Rosie, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. Okay, so I noticed on Dr. Vitale on the website, this is what you proclaim that you are an equity champion and that you have adopted policies and practices with a true equity lens and include creating board resolutions that acknowledge OUSD is a safe place for students regardless of their immigration status, ensuring LGBTQ students have safe and supportive spaces on each campus, and supporting her district in adopting an ethnic studies course that reflects the district's demographics. Her breadth and depth of understanding of leading council systems with a student-centered focus is as incredible asset to the work of creating real equity in schools. So there's equity a couple of times in your statement and LGBTQ. So you don't actually represent our community and our values because we here in Ocean Side are for traditional families, for husband and wife, for marriages, for kids that are going to school that are not bombarded with all these policies that you have adopted and the school board. I noticed a couple of resolutions as well. Resolution number 31 proclaiming that black lives matter. Why are you politicizing our education system when our kids should be learning about our nation's history, our constitution, reading, writing, math, and arithmetic? Also, your resolution, resolution number five about immigrants, where they're protected from ICE, they can come and they can study, that you will not discriminate against them and yet, or harass them. And yet our children and our families are harassed with now this vaccine mandate and this mask mandate for children. Parents, I want you to wake up and I want you to research 1000covidstories.com. Once again, 1000covidstories.com. Why would you inject your child with an experimental shot when you have no idea what it will do when COVID has a 99.98% recovery rate? So parents, obviously Eleanor, she also went to a transgender awareness day remembrance. It is clear that your agenda is for LGBTQ, it is for out, for safe schools, it's for equity, it's for ethnic studies. All of this stuff is crap that we as families reject in Ocean Side District. And so Mike Blessing, Raquel, Stacy, you're not in the best interest of our children. And I think, I mean, we're paying Dr. Vitale over $270,000 in her salary with benefits according to the Ocean Side News. And for what? For you to destroy the fabric of our society. This is not what we want for our kids.
Thank you for your comment. We have one more public speaker tonight.
Patrick.
Dr. Begin, Patrick Higuerera is not available in the room to promote.
Okay, so we're done with public comments tonight. All right, moving on to item 13, board and staff discussion. I would like to remind my board colleagues that this area of the agenda, we should not be bringing up new items. We should not be discussing new items that weren't agendized because our, our, the public does not have that on the agenda and they cannot comment on it. This is more about your overall thoughts on tonight's meeting and the just final thoughts on this part of the meeting. So I'll turn it over to Raquel Alvarez. Do you have any final thoughts you'd like to share?
Actually, I'm joking. I just want to thank everybody. It's been an amazing semester back to school with all these students. Seeing them going and seeing them at the football games, doing the different things that they're doing, they're getting out again and doing their shows and everything else and participating in amazing ways. And just academically, our students as a whole, hearing at the football banquets and the different sports banquets, hearing the students with a 3.0 and a 4.0, some of them even, which was amazing to see like it some of our high schools. While they're playing sports, they're academically still doing amazing. So kudos to those students and everybody else because it's, it's been difficult getting back into a regular routine for everybody. So I want to thank all the staff as a whole. You guys have done amazing this semester, getting back into a routine and trying to get into a routine again of just and just being supportive of all of our students. I thank you so much. It means everything. You, please enjoy the break. Very much needed. Our students just take a mental break, you know, getting back into things again and coming back in full force, ready to learn, ready to achieve, ready to go on to the next steps of everything that you're doing for our students that are graduated as Surfside. Congratulations. This semester you've done amazing. I can't wait to be back at those graduations and seeing those promotions and doing those things again at that school because they have worked hard. They work hard. And amazingly enough, they're finishing at, at record pace, some of them. So kudos to you all. Thank you again to everybody for everything. Again, for all the presentations tonight, there, a lot of work was put into many of them and all of them actually. So to everybody for everything tonight. Thank you. I wish you all a happy holiday and a well-deserved break for many and all. And if you're not, you can't, then you'll be working. Sorry, but it's about the students, you know, and we're doing about, we're about our kids and what we can do for them and how we're going to support them. So thank you again to all.
Thanks, Raquel. Does any other board member have final thoughts they'd like to share?
I have, I would like to thank CSCEA for the T-shirt. I will be wearing it. Thank you very much. I don't know if I was selected or everyone received one. But again, thank you. Also, I'd like to compliment our community for the fact that they are opening their hearts to what is going on in our nationwide. And again, thank you. Like I said, I, you know, on a personal level, I was shocked to see some of the photos that I talked about earlier. Okay. I want to wish everyone a happy holiday and Merry Christmas. We just finished Kwanzaa, so hopefully it was positive for those folks who observe Kwanzaa. We just finished Hanukkah as well. And again, hopefully it was positive for everyone. And I know there's some other holidays this time of year that I'm omitting because I'm not aware, but again, may all of you have a joyous, joyous new year. And Raquel, I am so thrilled to see you and hear you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Eleanor. Anyone else?
Yes, really briefly. I just want to be very clear that the Ocean Side community that I know affirms people to love who they love and believes that children, no matter their migrant status, should be safe in our schools. That's the community that I know despite some of the discriminatory comments that we heard earlier tonight. So I am proud to serve on a board that, that believes in affirming the humanity of the people that we serve on a day-to-day basis. Thank you all for being amazing.
Mike, do you have? Got to unmute, Mike.
Gosh, I do. I did a boomer thing. I had it right there. I say, I'm proud to serve with Eric and Raquel and Eleanor and you, Stacy. It's been a great year. All in all, it's been a challenging year for sure, but we're gonna have a happy new year going forward. I wish everybody the best. Good night.
All right. On that note, you got, everyone have a happy holidays. Thanks again, staff, for doing all the hard work for our board meeting and presentations. And thanks to all our teachers and classified staff out there. Enjoy your well-deserved break. Have a nice night. The meeting is now adjourned at 9:29 PM.